Can everybody give me a, hold on a second? Can I get, hold on? Chuck, can I get a voice check? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you well. Can you hear me? A little louder?
One, two, three, four, five. Chuck, can you return?
I hear you. One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, boy.
Too loud, too quiet?
Try that.
One, two, three, four, five.
Can everybody in the back here? Little bit more?
One, two, three, four, five.
Are we okay in the back? I think that'll work. Thank you.
That sounds good, Chuck.
Thank you. Supervisor Derhenesian, can you confirm that we're recording at the dais? Dr. Addison, are we good to commence the meeting?
Yes.
All right, everyone, I have 6:30 on my computer. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to announce that there is a recording device at the dais for the purposes of taking meeting minutes, and we are streaming live and having a recording on our YouTube channel. Prior to this session, there was an executive session where personnel, real estate, legal matters were discussed, and there is proof of advertisement of this meeting at the dais as well. Onto the approval of minutes. Motion made by Supervisor Derhenesian and seconded by Supervisor Iakano. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Dr. Addison, it's a little faint for me on the dais. I don't know if we can turn that up a little bit?
My microphone isn't on. My mic is on.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Great. Thank you. Onto public hearings. Supervisor DiAgostino? This may be in your court?
Yeah, so I'm gonna do a brief review and then our solicitor will get into more of the legalese, so.
You want to open the public hearing first before we do that?
Chairman should open the public hearing.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing on ordinance 244 for the volunteer service tax credit program.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please continue, Doctor, or Mr. DiAgostino.
Doctor's okay. So, yeah, JP's close enough. So, a number of years ago, Pennsylvania State Legislature General Assembly passed a law that allowed county and local municipalities to pass an ordinance that would give firefighters, mostly firefighters, wouldn't have to pay their local tax. The purpose behind it is volunteer firefighters, unfortunately, you know, people are busy, they don't have the time, so this is one of the enabling acts that the General Assembly gave local municipalities and counties to encourage volunteerism. Unfortunately, not many municipalities or counties have done it in Pennsylvania. The only one I'm aware of is Chesapeake County. So, with the tax burden in our county and our municipality increasing, a year or so ago, I first brought up this topic. I know Chuck, when he was liaison for fire, he moved it forward, then I became liaison for fire, and today, we're gonna hopefully pass it. So, there's certain criteria, basically based on volunteerism, and just so everybody knows, you don't have to fight fires to be a volunteer, okay? There's back office work that needs to be done, there's fundraising stuff that needs to be done, so I encourage people who may feel they're, you know, not to rate age or not physically able to fight fires, there's plenty of work that the fire department needs to help that you can do without fighting fires. So, this is also a public service announcement for that. So, basically, if you meet a certain criteria, and that is, you know, you're putting a number of hours of volunteer in a year, your Bethel Township taxes, you will not have to pay. Only Bethel Township, because that's all we can control is Bethel Township. We hope to expand and invite other communities to join us, because not all of our volunteer firefighters live in Bethel Township. So, we hope to do agreements with surrounding municipalities that will do the same for maybe Bethel firefighters who live in Aston or Chi-Chesapeake. So, I'll hand it over to our solicitor to talk more of the legal stuff.
Yeah. I, well, you did a pretty nice job. Can everybody here move out of microphone? Do you have a microphone? For you, normal.
So, I think Supervisor DiAgostino did a nice job summarizing this. A couple nuances to it. One is the reciprocity could apply the other way too, right? So, if you were an Aston firefighter who lived in Bethel, if we were able to come to the reciprocity agreement, they would get this credit. Without, without an agreement from the neighboring municipality, they, only firefighters in Bethel will get the credit in Bethel. It's also technically available for volunteers of an, of a nonprofit EMS entity, and we have a nonprofit EMS entity operating in town, but they're not volunteer-based, they're paid employee-based. The only other nuance is that technically, they have to pay the tax and then it's a credit back, right? So, they pay the tax, we work with the fire department to see who on the roster met the volunteer criteria, and then those people would get a credit, be able to apply for a credit back. What you'll see as we go through the agenda is this is just a public hearing on this item. Once we close the public hearing, the board will move through its business, and then we get to the new business section of the agenda. There's this ordinance that we're discussing now, and there's also a resolution that establishes the criteria for the firefighters, and this is something that was developed in conjunction with Bethel Host Company. That can be fluid, this is our first time doing it, so we did those criteria by resolution, so that if we learn something, we have the opportunity to edit it.
And Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have. By way of introduction, it'd be appropriate for you to call for any public comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Madren. Yes, please, we'd like to now open this to the public for comment.
Good? Good?
It doesn't amplify.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It's for the people.
Pretty good? All right, okay. I mean, we could all hear each other. Okay. Sorry, I'm a soft talking. So, Mike, is this restricted solely to firefighters? And who else can receive this tax credit? And what would they be volunteering for, aside from firefighting?
So, you need to be a volunteer of Bethel Host Company, number one.
Okay, so it's restricted solely to the host company?
Yeah.
That's awesome. That was it. There's my question.
We're not necessarily firefighters, volunteers for the fire company. So, if you could help with fundraising or accounting, all that stuff?
That would help.
That would help. That's all.
Thank you.
Name and address, too, please.
Bob Lyons, L-Y-O-N-S. 3726 Mayfield Lane. Mayfield, M-A-Y-F-I-E-L-D. You said there's criteria? Where, what is the criteria? And then how do you track that criteria?
I don't have it. But, so, it's the fire company that tracks the criteria. I can, I can handle that second part. So, basically, each year, the chief of the fire company would certify who meets the criteria and provide that to the township by March 1st.
So, I'll give you some of the, some of the, oh, yeah. So, emergency calls, department training, certification, attending company meetings, fire prevention, public relations, firehouse hours, line officer, table officer, committee chair, committee member, fundraising, longevity, these are some of the items that they will track and give points for.
Right, but instead of, like, they're hours.
Yeah.
Like, how many hours do you get?
So, you need a hundred credit points, and each of these items have a credit assigned to it.
Than an hour?
Yes. They're each weighted, basically, so.
So, if you're, if you're an officer, you know, obviously, you're spending more time, so there's more points for funeral officer, emergency calls, there's points for that. So, that's a criteria that the department will track.
Have you estimated, like, how many people are eligible for that? And have you estimated what the cost would be to the township if you're giving that credit back?
Well, this, like I said, the first year we're doing it, so until we get through this first year, that's gonna be the trial period, and we see actually how many people are eligible and doing it.
So, this is the first year that the fire department will be tracking the criteria, because the criteria was established during the year. So, I don't think we have, I don't know if anybody from the fire department is here. Brett, do you have an estimate of the number of people who are gonna qualify for this? How many, how many members do you have?
As far as full reactive, about twenty, and then we have Charlie, and the fifth one. Administration. Fundraising. But they don't rise to our, yeah, this is a part of.
Right.
Right, but other people beyond that would be eligible, potentially.
Correct. If, if, say yourself, wanted to run through fundraising, if you take care of the fundraising and make some meetings, like our company meetings, we have months to month, you'll, you'll, like, as they say, you'll have points when you make the criteria.
So, are you going through a trial period to find out how many people will be eligible and achieve that, and then find out what the impact is to the budget as a result of these tax credits?
No, this is gonna be first, we're gonna enact this ordinance, okay? The, the idea the General Assembly had and we have is, and the department can talk for an eye, that is very hard to get people to come and volunteer to fight fires. So, so the amount of money, which we don't believe is gonna be excessive, because it's probably only a handful that live in Bethel, correct? Is worth the value and be able to protect our citizens.
Right, you said you didn't know what the impact would be.
Correct. Because it is the first year we're doing it.
I mean, we know that it's probably limited, right? There's thirty-five members, most of them don't have. Six to ten members that live in Bethel. Even if it's, even if it was, say, a thousand bucks a member, just to put a round number on it, a paid firefighter costs us, what, about a hundred fifty thousand between benefits and salary and those sorts of things, so.
Why would you implement something if you don't know what the impact is going to be?
Well, we know it's within a small ballpark, and if we don't implement it, then we have to be proactive and try to get more people to volunteer, but.
What we think the ballpark is?
Like I said, we have between six and ten Bethel residents. Doesn't mean they're all gonna qualify, so until we go through that process, this has never been tracked before.
What's our app? Peter, do you know, or Ed Plash, do you know our average tax per household?
Yeah, I would estimate from that purpose, it's about five hundred dollars of tax. Five hundred dollars of tax.
I'm sorry, can you, can you say your name and your position with the township?
Ed Plash, P-L-A-S-H-A, pack. About, let's say, five hundred dollars average tax. If there were twenty firefighters, it'd be about ten thousand dollars, and over one point five million dollars would be less than a one percent of that. Increase on overall. I would say it's not a material number.
And if we were unable to provide volunteer service and we have to move to a paid service model, which would be cost prohibitive at this point for the small town.
You're talking about a tax increase to give?
No, there's no, there's no tax increase, no.
That's all I thought I had to say.
No, I don't believe it's a topic for there to be a tax.
No, I don't say tax increase, but it's immaterial relative to the overall, like, the ten thousand dollars.
And that's, that's a max.
Any, any other public comment? Okay. Chuck, I don't think there's any other.
Hearing none, I think it'd be appropriate for you to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance number 244.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All's in favor? Motion carries, and a public hearing is closed. Onto the treasure report, Mr. Bars.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, then, opportunity to take a look at my report. Just a couple items to note. Cash is, continued to be very healthy. The cash balance as of October 31st, 2025 is up four hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and seven cents over where we were a year ago. Currently, all cash in all accounts townshipwide totals five million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents a year ago. All township cash amounted to five thousand, four hundred and seventy, five, five million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. We're running a small, small deficit through the end of October, eighty-five thousand dollars. So, we're just about breaking even. Some of the positives on the revenue side of real estate taxes were forty-two thousand, eleven seventeen dollars and forty-one cents over budget, which is holding steady. We're forty-five thousand over budget in July, forty-three in August, forty-four in September. Our real estate transfer taxes, reflecting solid market value here in Bethel are up over budget, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents, which is, are continuing to hold steady as well. We're over budget eighty-six thousand dollars in July, eighty-one thousand in August, and a hundred and twelve thousand in September. I jump in into the trash fund, which is a fund we have to keep our eyes on. We are thirty thousand dollars. Our net income is thirty thousand dollars over budget. We are at three hundred thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents. We budgeted through the end of the ten months, October 31st, thought we would be at about two hundred and seventy thousand, eleven ten dollars. And so, and that's, that's remained constant. We were a hundred and four thousand dollars over budget in July, twenty-six thousand in August, and thirty thousand in September. With that, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bars. Is there any questions for Mr. Bars from the board? Hearing none, I'd like to make the motion to accept the treasure report, pay all bills, and release all relevant escrows.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Derhenesian. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto the financial reports. For the tax collectors' report, during the month of October, there were thirty-seven invoices collected in an amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. And as of October 31st, 2025, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-two tax bills were collected out of three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven for a ninety-seven point three, four percent collection rate. And for Garnet Valley School District, three thousand, four hundred and fifty payments have also been processed for a total of twenty-five million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twenty-eight and fifty-eight cents. I butchered that one, sorry, I blame the lag. Over twenty-five million is collected for the Garnet Valley School District. Mr. Plash, is there anything else to add on that?
Yes, most of the actions on the school side, I know I've been posting collection hours this Monday, five fifteen or five forty-five. We sent notices out in September for reminders that probably have the October activity. We're still about eighty-one partial shy. I'm gonna send another notice out in Iwo in December, usually, and we're in the off course.
Thank you. That concludes the tax report. Onto public safety. Supervisor Derhenesian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Moncarthys? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Supervisors, good evening, everyone. During the month of October, Bethel Township Police Department had nine twenty, nine hundred and twenty-two calls for service. They are broken down into fifty-one medical emergencies, one DUI arrest, one active rape investigation, one, zero burglaries. There were fifteen alarms, fifty-one traffic stops, resulting in thirty-six citations, four domestic-related calls, sixteen crashes, one theft, eight other criminal investigations, five hundred and ninety-two building and development checks, eleven vacation home checks, as well as eighteen suspicious persons and vehicles. Other than that, there were a hundred and fifteen miscellaneous calls that were answered by the police department. In 2024, there were nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty crashes that were caused by distracted driving in Pennsylvania, and that resulted in over six thousand injuries and forty-nine fatalities. Distracted driving is the leading cause of accidents in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, with driving while texting being the most common one. Other than that, again, a reminder to be situationally aware of your surroundings. If you see something that you do not think is right, if it feels out of place to you, please call 911, let us know what's going on, so we can send someone out to investigate.
Thank you. I have a question about, maybe you could address the letters that people in the community have received.
Yes, on, starting on Sunday and into Monday, we received a total of four complaints. Two of them were email complaints to me, and two were walk-ins to the police station, to the police officers of letters that had been placed in, that they believe had been placed in their mailboxes. We have contacted the United States Postal Authority and the postal police, and we are awaiting some guidance from them. I did a little research on my own and spoke to a friend of mine off the record who is a postal service, and basically, what he told me was that any mail that is put into the, anything that is put into the mailbox requires, obviously, a stamp from the United States Postal Service, and it actually, and it has to be processed through the postal service. So, it is, in fact, illegal. It is a federal offense to stick any type of item into the mailbox that does not fit those two criteria, a stamp and process through the postal service. If we, we are, we are conducting an investigation into that, and we are gonna turn our findings over to the postal service, they are assisting us. Obviously, it is not something that the Bethel Township Police Department or any local police department has jurisdiction over, because it is actually the United States federal law, so.
Thank you. There's a question.
There have been, there were some that apparently were mailed. Of the four that I have, I have the letters for all four. One of them does have a postmark on it, so.
Not sure, what? Oh, the Facebook? Came from the township.
I think we, I think we need everybody to come up to the podium, because the camera's not picking everybody up.
I, I, I believe I'm done.
I think so, too. Thank you.
Dave Tustin, 1159 Namet Creek Road. So, I got a notice today to look at Facebook, because Bethel Township posted something on the Facebook page. Oh, okay, maybe it's about the park, or what is it about? But it's about this, you know, unidentified letter that was put in some, some people's mailboxes. I didn't do it, by the way. But I would like to say that, you know, I know it's not the right thing to do, we shouldn't be doing that, but the way Bethel presented it there, like, it's a federal crime, it is a federal crime, but is that the thing we need our stress, our, our police to be focused on? I'd like them to be looking at the roads that are, you know, speeding, safety, going after, like, somebody who puts something in a mailbox, man, that is really, and then what I don't like about it is, could you please let us know if you have video on your camera? Really, what that's telling me is you're getting neighbors against neighbors, and I don't like that. I commented back to the site, I don't know. Went into the ethers, probably nobody's gonna reply to me, but anyway, just wanted to let that be out there. I appreciate that.
If I can make a comment, this is the first, I'm hearing that the township is actively, like, trying to prosecute a resident for doing this? As a supervisor, nobody informed me of this, so I'm not sure who authorized the letter to be posted to, you know? Yeah. First I'm hearing of it, and I still think we have freedom of speech in this country, but obviously, some people don't like speech, so it's a shame. I was not aware of that. Nobody informed me.
Still the same guy, Harrison, I guess. Okay, so, I just got a couple of questions for the chief real quick. Chief, I just have a couple of questions. Number one, these crimes that we're investigating, are they solely in Bethel Township, or do we cross the line into Concord Township for some of these incidents? Okay, so we, so we solely do Bethel, we don't go into Concord at all?
We don't go into Concord as a primary.
Do we backfill these other townships for the work that we're doing? I mean, I appreciate what you're doing in Bethel, I have to tell you that. But do we backfill these other townships for our services? No?
It's not, it's not something that's very common, and if we do back them, it's not a, I'm just saying, like, it might, in Texas, you know, we're getting the sheriffs from the Chatsworth.
Okay. I just think in some cases, they should, you should be compensated for that. I mean, you know, we're going into another township, we're paying the taxes, I'm certainly not paying for Aston or all these other townships. I mean, we're paying them for here. And I believe that this is a way to create revenue for the new automobiles and all the stuff that we're purchasing. I mean, this is an income stream for us, and I wonder why we're not looking at that. Okay. All right, and then the. Also, occasionally. I understand. And also regarding these letters, occasionally, like, Amazon puts a package in my mailbox, a landscaper might leave a letter in there for the bill or something. Are these people creating federal grants? I mean, so we're talking about a letter just to pack this room, by the way, the Daily Times doesn't do that. So, the letter seemed to have a really big. So the letter seemed to have a really big effect on people. I mean, they looked at that number and they were like, oh, I gotta go to the township building. And at the end of the day, I just think that this is really strong. And I realize like, look, it's against the law, but there's a lot of things that are against the law that are kind of being looked past nowadays. And at the end of the day, I'm just concerned. I don't want to see my Amazon guy to go to prison. Or somebody that's coming by putting a package in my mailbox to say, pay your grass bill. Is going to go to jail. I mean, they're just trying to get themselves paid. I mean, I think it was more of a problem because of the information. And I think that it was more retaliatory nonsense. I'm not saying that, but I just care about this township and I want, I want what's best for us. I really do. And I just think that I don't want my neighbors going against each other because of maybe political views or things like that. I think that's the most awful thing that's in our society right now. And I just don't want to see if they're exacerbated by something like this. That's all I got. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for your service.
I, it's why we're stalling this because it's really taking me off guard. I was not aware the township put something out asking for information about this. I have babysitters every summertime that come up from college. You put a flyer in my mailbox saying, if you need a babysitter, please contact me. I have lawn guys put it every, every month. Are we sending, we calling the feds after this college girl? We calling the feds after the guy who cuts grass? It seems like it's meant to kill speech. This is seem like it's meant to make sure you guys don't come back to a meeting. This is horrible.
Well, Supervisor D'Agostino, do you agree that it's illegal or you, do you disagree that it's illegal?
Okay, so when the baby, so Supervisor Chairman Denny, so when the college girl puts a flyer in my mailbox. I know it's illegal. I should call the feds on her? Are you kidding me? That's the stance you're taking?
That, that's, that's not what I asked you. Do you know whether it's illegal?
You don't, you don't, I don't have to answer your questions. I'm here to make a public statement. Okay, is your statement that the babysitter, if, if your statement, the babysitter from college should go, be called the feds on and asked all the neighbors to check their ring cameras so we can arrest her and turn her into the fed because she put a flyer in my mailbox? Or are people upset that this room is packed because they disagree with somebody who's not in power?
Yeah, I think there's, there's probably a little bit of difference between one flyer and a thousand flyers and circumventing the, the United States Postal Service, but that's not really my, my place to judge, right? That's not our police enforcement's place to judge.
Did you, did you direct staff to post it on the website?
Did I direct staff to post on the website? I did not.
Who did? Did any supervisor do it? What supervisor directed staff to post something saying rat out your neighbors?
I don't, I don't generally direct the police department to do whatever it is they do to do their policing. But I think if, if what you're saying to me is you think
How did it get on the township website? I wasn't aware of it. Giovanni, were you aware of it going to township website?
Yes, I was.
Okay, but the chairman wasn't? Wow.
Well, I'm not saying whether I was aware or whether I
Something was posted on the township website and you weren't aware of it? Aren't you upset about that?
Awareness and direction are two different questions.
Okay, okay. So you didn't get the directive. You were told about it. Had somebody else do the dirty work?
I get informed about a lot of things that happen in the township.
Okay, so Giovanni directed it then. Okay.
But so that I understand correctly, in, in your mind, because it brought people to the township, the ends justify the means is what you're saying.
No, I'm saying it's freedom of speech and, and, and obviously people were upset that people are talking. So you, you believe calling the feds and all these citizens here and saying check your ring cameras is an appropriate measure of response?
I think it's appropriate for people to
Different time and different neighborhood. I don't know.
Okay. There, there appears to be more common.
Erica Brynack, fourteen forty, Namens Creek Road. I think that the fact of the matter is regardless of what the envelopes contain. The fact is that putting something in somebody else's mailbox and not doing it through the postal service is a federal crime. Now, if you all did not know that, you now know it. If your babysitter puts her thing in your mailbox, you can now say, hey, please don't put that in the mailbox or anybody else's because it's a federal crime. So you can leave it in my door or you can leave it under my mat. Now, we didn't make the rules. I didn't make the rules, but I don't leave things in other people's mailboxes because I knew it was a federal crime. Maybe some of you did not know, but now you know. So I don't see what the big deal is about this. I think that people don't like things put in their mailbox because it is a federal crime. And people apparently felt that they were being violated and they called the police, I assume. And he is looking into it as police should. So regardless, that, that's just the way it is. It is a federal crime. If you don't like it. You know, talk to your, talk to the feds. Yeah, talk to the federal government. But I think it's ridiculous to get all upset about it. If somebody puts something in my mailbox and I happen to have a ring camera. I would want to know who did it personally. I don't think anybody's going to call the feds on their babysitter or their lawn guy, but now that you know that it's a federal crime, you could remind them just to stick it under your mattress. Very simple solution. Thanks.
Would it be acceptable for us to move to the, the next item on the agenda? I'm not sure if there's comment. I'm sorry. Please, go ahead. Please. I didn't see you. Please continue.
Leah Consiglio, one-zero-zero-six, Ryan's Run. I want to make a point that this is the most people I have seen in one single meeting in months. I am the youngest person here by far. I'm glad that you guys care, but the fact is you're believing something that was put in your mailbox instead of actually showing up and seeing how the local government works. I'm also a junior council member for Delaware County. I have been coming here. I was a junior supervisor here. And now I still attend the meetings because I care about what's happening in our community. So I'm glad that you guys all care too, but it would have been nice to see this put in before instead of just believing. I don't know if you guys know what rage bait is, but essentially rage bait that was put in your mailbox. You guys are here because people wanted you to be angry rather than knowing your facts and knowing what's going on. So I hope you guys are all here to know what is going on rather than to just get mad at the people doing their jobs. That's all.
All right, here we are again. James McDaniel, fourteen fifteen, Zebby Road East. I was glad to receive my letter. And actually, excuse the, I guess it's named chicken blood, eggs, coffee stains. I think mine along with a lot of other people was mail. Perfect legal. I'm glad it came. I'm more concerned there was one on the township. Is this just bad? I won't say it's bad. I don't think this is bad, but it's on the township website and nobody's earning up to it. And I tell you, those all these people here are taxpayers. And I've been a taxpayer forty-eight years on Zebby Road. I pay taxes. My wife has me pay taxes. You pay taxes, Mike?
There we go.
You pay taxes? Mr. Davey ain't here. You pay taxes? What's that guy? Denny? You know, with all the heat, he's not here tonight. That's, that's, you know, I mean, that's like a no shot. Giovanni, we already discussed. Do you pay taxes?
I live in a household that pays.
No, do you pay taxes?
I live in a household.
That's different than your name being on a tax bill. You're not responsible for paying taxes. If I don't pay taxes, my wife don't help me pay taxes, we'll be on the street. I can't call my mom and dad up and say, hey, can you give me ten grand? Yeah, more. There you go. I live in an old house. This, this is why this letter is good. Cause all during politics, everybody was denying, denying freaking shortfall. It's big. It's bigger than this. I'd be willing, I'd be willing to bet the Schaefer property is close to three million. Because that figure is real slow coming out. How much have people been spending over there? You know, there was a lady here up here a couple of months ago, on sidewalks, crosswalks, you know. I started out, I was eighteen years old on George's Drive. My family was out of high school when I moved out of my parents' house because I didn't like following rules. If you want sidewalks, crosswalks, go down Trainer, go down Littlewood, nice areas, Cass Harry Park on Hughes Avenue, beautiful park. And it's a park and actually you can do things there. The Schaefer property, you can't do nothing but walk your dog. And it's costing us a fortune. And I'll tell you another thing. I, I hate to mention it because there's a since people like, the women said they want to walk. I, you made a comment one night, you like to walk. You don't have a problem walking from the Aggison Park to the Schaefer property. I don't know what weekend, I guess it was the weekend of the log cabin. I come up out the road, you were on foot somewhere around Major Property, okay? I have a three-tier sex offender across the street from me. We watch him like a dog, man. Chief, I don't care if you have ten cars, you can't predict who's coming down the road, right? You, you can't stop. You can have twenty-five piece cars, you can't stop who's coming down the road. I got Bethel, Aston, Concord, Chad's Ford, Chester Heights, Upper Chi. Seventy-three sex offenders. And you people want to walk on sidewalks? I wouldn't walk from my house to the Boost Corners Market, ten o'clock Saturday morning when I had gunning up. You have no control. Who's on, who's coming down the road? And you people want sidewalks? And then we got shovel in the winter time. And I can say, you want sidewalks? Mike, my son lives in Aston. Got Aston, plenty of sidewalks down there. Plenty of sidewalks. And they got a nice park too. Let's tell you what, you want sidewalks, crosswalks, go down Littlewood, Cass Harry, Cass Perry Park, Rocco Cass Perry's Park, beautiful park. It has tennis court, all kinds of activities because it's a park. It's a freaking park. All township people is going to go to the Schaefer Reserve with scoops and pick up dog crap. That's all that's going to be is a dog crap park. And I said a long time ago, Sour Lemon Tree Park is what that should be named. And Mr. Schaefer is above all this bullshit for this park. Like I say, this letter is a good thing. Letter's a good thing. And actually, the township letter is wrong because mine and other people's, I don't know who else got theirs mailed, mine was mailed. It's actually on my granddaughter's phone on that web, that app for mail. It shows it on there also. And when I got it out of the mailbox, it was in a bundle of mail. So I, I think it's a very small number and I, I don't know. I just think people are false. No, I'm going to sit damn back here. I might be up against. And I like, I like you the other night. Facts weren't all right, but you're a long time resident. How many years? Twenty-six. How many other people been here a long time? Hey, there you go. There you go. They're not million dollar people just passing through. These long time people. Long time. And there's still eighty people who haven't paid their taxes yet, township taxes. That matter? No, we want them twenty-five hundred dollar benches on the Schaefer Reserve. You still looking at them, Giovanni? Fifteen benches, twenty-five hundred bucks apiece? That was on your golden list too. No, no. See, my mom and dad are dead. They're gone. I gotta, I gotta pay my own way.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to the agenda and make a motion to approve the purchase of a taxable top box from Intercon Truck Equipment in an amount not to exceed three thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Motion made by Supervisor DeHernesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Any discussion from the board on this? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto Bethel Hose Company number one, Supervisor D'Agostino.
Brett, do you have a report tonight? Oh, sorry. You were back there. You quit.
Be me aboard. I got, yeah, I got that back here. Good evening, folks. Good evening, board. We had forty-five calls for service this month. A little bit slower than normal. We had the three automatic alarms, seven medical assists, two vehicle accidents. Two building fires, three gas leaks and three wires calls in township. Which is low because of the amount of wind and stuff we had. It was a lot of lights flickered and stuff, but not going well. We didn't lose much power. We had mutual aid. We had four with Concordville. We had five with Upper Chi. Seven with Tallyville, six with Claymont. Three with Brandywine Hundred and one with Aston Township. We had one drill for the month. We also had a class the other night on a new radio system that the county has putting in service next month for fire and police and EMS, which will help better communications throughout the county. Gives us the capability of communicating Chester County, Newcastle County, Montgomery County, even over into Gloucester County and stuff where some units actually we respond to. So when you talk about the police going across lines, fire does the same thing. We go across assist them. They come across assist us because unfortunately with, with the tax break that they're working on for volunteers, we're hoping that the rest of the townships will step up and help out with the volunteers. We spend a lot of areas. I got forty years in service myself. My brother has fifty-five years in service. We spend a lot of hours up there at our own time. We leave a lot of dinners, a lot of personal things. We're very thankful. Unfortunately, we had two training events tonight. That's why our members weren't here. They were going to come and thank the board for stepping up and trying to get this to move through. We're trying to get, like they said, we're trying to get the area townships and also Newcastle because we got several members that live in Newcastle. We actually got two that live in Elkton, Maryland. They come up on the weekends and spend weekends up here to help us. We appreciate that and they wanted me to pass that on to thank you all for working on that. I see you Chuck. I'm looking at you here, but you're there. But thanks again for that and hopefully we can get it worked out with all the neighbors and everything like that. And also heating season, everybody make sure their heating system's working, their fireplaces are clean. And your batteries are changed. City of Philadelphia just had three fatalities this morning. An adult, two children, six and five. So make sure you have smoke detectors and you see how detectors are up to date. We don't want to come visit you. We want to bring Santa Claus around and say, but we don't want to visit. So thank you all.
Thanks Brett. And if you could pass along to the chief and the rest of the volunteers and officers that we appreciate you. I think the community appreciates you and hopefully besides passing this, you know, tax credit, when you get the little mailers for fundraisers that come around, please, please donate to that. With that being said, our next item is ordinance two forty-four. This is the volunteer service tax credit that was talked about at the beginning of the meeting. I'm going to read a brief summary and then make a motion. So ordinance two forty-four, volunteer service tax credits. In ordinance of the Bethel Township, of Bethel Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, establishing a volunteer service tax credit program. Providing for one hundred percent tax credit for volunteers that meet certain criteria. Establishing a process for administrating the program. Establishing an appeals processes, process for volunteers, taxpayers deny the tax credit. Providing the opportunity for reciprocity with other municipalities and volunteer service agencies. And repealing any inconsistencies therefore. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance two forty-four volunteer service tax credits.
Motion made by Supervisor D'Agostino and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Any comments from the board? I did just want to say Supervisor D'Agostino, you know, thanks to you and for Mr. Madge. I did just want to say Supervisor D'Agostino, uh, you know, thanks to you and for Mr. Madger for pushing that across the finish line. Um, I, you know, I, I'm of the mindset that every little bit helps in trying to gain traction there, so thanks for your efforts.
Thank you Chuck, and I appreciate it, everybody else's support too, and the fire department and everybody who worked to get it done, thank you. Not done yet.
With that, I, I will say, all those in favor of, of adopting ordinance two forty-four?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Now it's going more far. I lost it on my.
I got it.
Oh, here we go, here we go. These could be big binders, that paper, but it doesn't look true. All right, uh, next is resolution two twenty-five dash thirty-five. This is the volunteer tax service credit criteria. Um, so some of the criteria I talked about earlier about being an officer, about fear of fundraising, um, the, uh, fire department will use that criteria to determine who's eligible and submit that list to the county. Um, so this resolution lays out that criteria and, um, it needs to be tweaked, every year the resolution can be updated at part of the public meeting. Um, so I'd like to, um, make a motion to pass resolution two, two twenty-five dash thirty-five, uh, volunteer tax service credit.
Motion made by Supervisor D'Agostino and seconded by Supervisor Iacano, any comments on this one from the board? I will say, I, I, in reviewing it, my initial reaction there, it appears to me there's a lot of different ways to hit a hundred credits, and I kind of thought that was, it's by design. I, I, I think it should be hopefully achievable by, by the folks that are, uh, pretty regular partners with, with the host company. But Supervisor D'Agostino, did I understand correctly that if, if it's too onerous or maybe too easy, that's something that could be reflected in, in a future resolution?
Yeah, so the, the ordinance is the law, the resolution, just like we update a fee resolution or other resolutions, um, that can be updated on an annual basis if needed.
Great, thank you. Hearing no other comment from the board, all those in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So have Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, on to emergency medical services Supervisor Iacano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, there were thirty calls for EMS this month, twenty-three of them were ALS calls and seven of them were DLS calls. Our emergency management coordinator notes no events of major injury or property damage. He said the Bethel Springs Trunk Retreat was well attended and completed without incident. He was working with Foxfield in reference to updating their emergency plans and is working with some of the other on businesses in the township for updated emergency plans. He's also been attending some regular training. With that, I've included the EMS and emergency management reports and I'll move on to the highway and buildings and grounds reports. Uh, highway department for October finished painting speedlines for the police department, repainted all the parking lines and handicap spots in the parks, completed thirty-seven storm drain repairs, serviced four trucks of the fleet and completed repairs as needed, serviced five police cars and completed repairs as needed, cleared playground and trail with Jack King Park of leaves, cleaned leaves around the township parking lot, and removed a fallen tree off of Buckle Road. They repaired the men's room lighting in the administration building, started repairing and painting the interior walls of the police station, trimmed and cleaned the leaves around the campus, and installed new guards and downstalls to help with the rain runoff around the campus buildings. That concludes the facility and members report.
Thank you, on to the, uh, board reports first is Parks and Recreation. So the meeting that was posted in the redacted packet online is from the October meeting, the November meeting was last Wednesday, but the minutes weren't prepared by the cutoff period to get the packet, uh, incorporated. So specific highlights, uh, from that meeting is that the Snacks with Santa event is scheduled for December sixth this year, from eleven to two. There will be, uh, obviously snacks, there's crafts, there's going to be some games and activities, and then a photo opportunity with Santa himself. Um, the twenty-twenty-six dates for, for our Bethel Township events are approved. Um, so the egg hunt is scheduled for April fourth, twenty-twenty-six, movie night, uh, is June fifth, twenty-twenty-six fireworks, July third, uh, corn boil on August twenty-third, and the Santa event December fifth of twenty-twenty-sixth. The other item of note that was discussed in the board meetings, um, is an allocation for the United States Semi-Quintcentennial Celebration, so the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the nation happening next year, and even within, uh, Pennsylvania, there's, uh, second-class townships are adopting America Two Fifty P A, which is really just a commemorative, uh, adoption to try to organize celebrations and awareness of first responders and things like that. The Parks and Recreation Board has, have initial discussions with Concord Township, trying to do a collaborative event. Tentative schedule right now that they're working on is October third, uh, or October tenth next year, but that's certainly a work in progress. There was a, a request by the Parks and Rec Board for an allocation of up to ten thousand dollars, uh, from the, from the township for, uh, facilitating that event. Um, but in light of, you know, the challenges that we have with, uh, our budget in this township, uh, we're hopeful that we can do what we can within the budget that we have already allocated in the preliminary budget for Parks and Rec. Um, that concludes the Parks Board Report. Onto zoning hearing Supervisor Derek Hinesian.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the board had nothing on the agenda in October, and at this time there are no new applications before the board. And that was respectfully submitted by Gary Reinahan, who, uh, was unable to join us tonight.
Thank you. Onto the Planning Commission Supervisor Iacano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission, uh, met and reviewed final plans for the daycare fourteen-twenty Conchester, uh, special use exception with granted by the zoning hearing board on June twenty-eighth with conditions. Township engineer provided a review and comments that were discussed with the applicant. The chairman advised the applicant to resolve all outstanding recommendations obtained and provide all required comments, submits form order management documentation and updated plans to reflect all outstanding requirements that were completed. Also at that meeting, board member George Lincoln has resigned from the planning commission because he has moved out of Bethel Township. Chairman and all board members thanked George for his service and participation during his tenure and wished him well. And with that, we would like to honor George, I think he's here tonight, George, can you stand up for me? So I, I'd like to make a motion to approve proclamation twenty twenty-five dash zero five, honor, recognizing and honoring George Lincoln for his dedicated service and contributions to Bethel Township. Whereas George Lincoln has provided in Bethel Township for more than twenty-seven years. Mr. Lincoln began his service to the township in two thousand and two as a member of the Parks and Recreation Board, upon which he served for nine years, including six years as the chair. During his tenure, the Parks and Rec Board was instrumental in acquiring the land for Jack King Park, Bethel Community Park, and Atkinson Park for developers, and establishing the parks using grant funding, thus providing residents with these treasured recreational areas with limited financial impact. Under Mr. Lincoln's leadership, the Parks and Recreation Board encouraged local boy scout troops to develop Eagle Scout projects that further enhance the township parks. In addition to his service on the Parks and Recreation Board, Mr. Lincoln has served as an active member of the Township's Planning Commission for the past four years, as well as volunteering as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, the Chicago Park Plan Committee, and the Open Space Plan Committee. Therefore, the, the resolved Bethel Township Board of Supervisors hereby recognizing George Lincoln for over twenty years of dedicated community services and wishes him well in all future endeavors. And I'd just like to say, George, thank you so much for all your assistance in the township, your comments, your time and your dedication to us, it was just invaluable like that. We really appreciated it and we're really going to miss you. I'm sad to see you go, wish we could keep you a little bit longer, but enjoy your new home and come back and visit us.
That will do it.
Thank you, George. I made a motion, you guys got it, somebody's got a second, and somebody's got a.
Second.
Yeah, and, uh, before I guess I take that, that vote, yeah, George, I honestly, I think you were one of the first folks to engage with me when I started becoming more involved and I appreciate your, your mentorship and altruistic beliefs, so, so thank you. That said, motion was made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by Supervisor D'Agostino. All is in favor of proclamation twenty twenty-five dash oh five? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, George.
And that concludes the planning commission report.
Thank you, Supervisor D'Agostino wants a super authority.
Bethel County Super Authority, the November meeting, uh, highlights were, uh, there, there's received grant money to install or replace four, uh, generators, uh, lanes from Green Glen, North Brook, Scotts Glen, and Lumen Circle. Uh, the purchases have been approved and installation plans are being worked on. That is the highlights, Donna, do you have anything additional? Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you, on to education, uh, Supervisor Derek Hinesian.
Thank you, um, so for this Garnet Valley School Board Report this month, um, we received some information about the Pennington Project and turf field update. Um, the turf field will be ready by December twenty twenty-five with all exterior work finalized by February twenty twenty-six. The field house will be completed by the end of June twenty twenty-six. The Pennington Building will reach substantial completion by mid-July twenty twenty-six with final exterior and parking lot work continuing through October. The storage building will be completed by the end of March twenty twenty-six, and the full modernization effort across the campus will conclude by February twenty twenty-seven, well in advance of the twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. Um, the school board also established the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven ca- uh, academic calendar. The first day of school will be Monday, August thirty-first, which is before Labor Day, and the last day is Wednesday, June ninth, twenty twenty-seven. Um, they also sent out some information about inclement weather options, um, so as most of you know that there's school closings, two-hour delays, early dismissals, and they've been implementing, uh, flexible instruction day more often where it can be used in place of in-person instruction. It's mostly online, um, the students know what to do, but there is also information about it on their website, so if you need to help your kids with that, that's all up there. Um, they also put out some information about supporting local GB families through Garnet Valley communities that care. Um, your monetary donations will directly provide meals and gifts for Garnet Valley families. And the, the Venmo account for that is also found online. Uh, that concludes the school board report.
Thank you, on to the library report.
On to the library report, I think, uh, thank you. The library director is here and so she can give us a. Oh, no, go for it, thank you.
All right, okay, hi, everybody, I'm Raina with right, I'm the library director for the Rachel Cole community, right? Sorry, my voice is going out a little bit. Um, just for our highlights for October, um, we had a really good second annual plant bingo, if anybody came for our seed library. Um, it was a lot of fun, everybody came home with a lot of plants, so it was a good thing. We also have a seed library, if you don't know, in the back of the library, which is free for anybody to come, gather seeds and do all of that, so it's nice. Um, we also have virtual author talks that we just started, um, having, so basically you can, um, see any kind of authors, all for free, um, just go to our website, you can sign up, and it's a nice way to see authors in person, and you can submit um, your questions and everything beforehand as well. Um, for our facilities update, if you didn't know, um, all this wind and everything over the last year, our roof is failing, so we are in the process of applying for grants and hopefully we will be getting that repaired in the next year before our patches fail again, so. One of those things, um, and then, um, we are also looking for adult volunteers to help with upcoming fundraising events, so if anybody's interested coming and helping us at the library, um, we're going to do a big book sale coming up in February, so, um, we're looking for anybody to come help us or donations, we'll take in those as well, so if you have donations, bring them by. Um, and then, um, just to let you know, we will be closed, obviously, for Thanksgiving and the day after. Um, and we have, for Bethel residents, just in case you guys don't know, you make up about twenty-five percent of our circulation. So we appreciate you coming in, and if there's anything ever that you would like to see in the library, please come and let us know.
Did I see something about, um, that you can make, both like donate books to the library now?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is there a cutoff?
Just started accepting them, we're going to accept them pretty much anytime.
Well, that's.
Um, there's a few guidelines of what we will accept and what we won't, but if you have things, um, that you just don't need in your house anymore, I would like to see what we do with the book donations, that's a big question that everybody has. If our collection warrants it, we may add it to the collection. Um, we may put it into our book sale. If it's not going to go into either of those places, we also, um, work with giving things to the prison. A lot of the books will go to them, um, and then we also have places that will buy them back from us, and that's another form of fundraising for the library.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So, um, by the way, Garrick Weaver, uh, thirty-one seventy-two, William Road, I am one of the liaisons for the board. Uh, and in Raina doing, taking over, uh, as the executive director, one of the things she did was she found, uh, a plate, uh, which was, um, made in nineteen eighty-nine, as everybody knows, Rachel Cole, uh, established the library along with, um, some great effort by other people, including the Bresby family. Um, and this plate basically commemorates that work, uh, showing Bethel, Birmingham, Chester Heights, Concord, and Thornbury Townships, um, as the founding townships. Obviously now, uh, Birmingham does not exist, uh, that is Chad's Ford. Um, and so we want to present this to the, uh, to the township as a, uh, a recognition of all the support and everything that the township has given us since nineteen eighty-nine and even before, uh, when as somebody pointed out, um, who's already left, um, prior to nineteen eighty-nine, we were in the trade, so. So we'd like to present this to the board and. I thought we were going to put Christmas cookies on.
And so back to the agenda, um, I would like to make a motion to release the year-end Rachel Cole Library True Up payment of one thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Supervisor Derek Hinesian and seconded by Supervisor Iacano, and then, uh, Supervisor Derek Hinesian, this is, this is just the remainder of the account balance, do you want to give some backstory there?
Um, so we typically, the township typically releases a set amount, um, to the library annually, and this is what is remaining in the account because more taxes were collected than what is the amount that we usually get done.
Based on a library.
Any other discussion from the board? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Dr. Addison, anything to add for the manager's report?
No service, Jim.
All right, thank you, we'll move on to old business, uh, I think we're now in a position with ordinance two forty-three, the open, uh, burning regulation ordinance, I think it's been modified, uh, based on comments from the previous uh, board supervisor's meeting, uh, Mr. Madger has made some corrections, it's been out there for uh, public comment, and I think we're finally in a position to adopt. Mr. Madger, is there any other, um, context you'd like to give?
Um, I, I, I could spend probably forty minutes going through the long and tortured history of the burn ordinance, but I, I think the bureaucratic and the most significant of the things, so. You know, there, there are people who have participated, know, um, that, that this has been a bit of a journey. Um, it required a lot of research and ultimately is very restrictive because the state law is very restrictive. It's basically a tool to get both the enforcement and for the state regulations, uh, regarding.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance two forty-three regulating open burning.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Deronassian. Is there any other discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public on this?
Yeah, my name's Howard Schmudd. I've been up here before. I'm sure you know my face. So with this burning ordinance, we burn our twigs, our leaves, stuff like that. Is this still able to be done? No. So in other words, we can't burn our yard waste?
Right, correct.
Okay.
So.
How long was this out, by the way? I know you tried the Daily Times.
Probably seven months.
Seven months, but we, I'm sure there's a lot of people that really aren't aware of this. The Daily Times really isn't a big, a big thing. How many people here get the Daily Times? Raise your hand. Wow. Zero, but they got the letter.
I know you made that comment.
Yeah.
The Daily Times.
I'm concerned.
State law requires.
Okay. But in the future, our residents receive a direct mail letter from the township, right? About all these things that are happening.
Well, I guess I'd say this, and I'm the lawyer, not the policy.
Oh, great. Tell me.
You know.
I'm speaking to the people now.
We have action like this several times a year, almost every month, probably. We have a lot of people who are concerned about spending. So we put it on the website because that's the most efficient way to spread it.
So when I don't burn my stuff, what do I do with it? I have to pay someone to take that away? Right, but like I said, we burn our stuff for years here.
I understand, and you can jeopardize another site for Garnet Valley.
This is not right. This is another terrible thing.
Nectarzone is thirty-two sixteen Garnet Mine. I live on two point six acres. I've got a hundred and seventy-five trees on my property. You think the recycle people are going to take storm debris from that many trees? They won't take my recycles as it is. If it's in a bag, they just leave it there. So I can tell you that recycling is not the solution here, not in this township, not where we're in a wooded farmland community where we were before y'all showed up. So this ordinance, I'll be the first one breaking it. I wasn't planning on burning Saturday, but Chief, thirty-two sixteen, come get me. There's no way I cannot burn. It's, and I think there's a lot of people here burning. I don't think, I don't think this is a good idea.
And Mr. Madron, just as a reminder, we have, we have an obligation to comply with the environmental regulations?
Yes, I mean, you know, right now, the state has the enforcement power. This ordinance will provide.
Thank you.
Quick question. John Hudson, thirty-one ninety-nine, Stillwood Lane, cross street from the reserve, the state of reserve. Is there any exceptions to this rule? For example, burning wood to stay warm or burning wood for? Yeah, so you could burn wood to stay warm?
You can burn clean, untreated wood.
Okay.
In a fire pit, in a grill, you know, things like that.
Put yourself in a grill, burn it there.
Move on.
I believe there was a motion made and a second. So all those in favor of ordinance two forty-three? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto new business. The first item is a wetland delineation letter. My understanding is when the Schaefer Preserve was procured, there was a wetland delineation that occurred at that time. But there is a requirement for a letter, an updated letter. And this is the cost to have the environmental consultant come out and evaluate and then provide that letter. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize environmental management and consulting to prepare a wetland delineation letter for the Schaefer Preserve in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Any discussion from the board on this? Discussion from the public on this? Seeing none? All those in, oh, pardon me.
John Hudson, again, thirty-one ninety-nine, Stillwood Lane, cross the street from the, between the reserves, Schaefer Reserve. Is there a need for this, 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 this seven hundred and fifty dollar expense?
In order to submit the permitting, you need to provide a letter of the.
I'm just going to go on the record that I'm against this, this park. I don't mind as a park for the community. What's on? No problem. And that's why I live across the street. There's a lot of things that they want to change and all, and change the zone. Well, we, we took one, come back on Thursday and see what the engineers have to say about the property. But if we must, I'm going to go on the record again against the, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Doreen McHale. I'm with the twenty-one twelve Shady Stylane in Garnet Valley. Obviously, I'm a Bethel resident, but I do not live close to the Schaefer property per se. And I guess I'd like to bring out a couple of things. First of all, regarding the letter that it's being going around, just to be on the record, ours got mailed through the post office for, for the records. Now, before I talk about a little bit about the Schaefer thing, which I really don't know too much about, I have to admit. But I'd like to share some numbers that I went back and looked at. And I like the board and whoever is responsible for taxes and all. I'd like to point out what has happened since twenty twenty. The reason I picked that number, that date, that year, is because, as you all know, in twenty twenty-one, we had the reassessment, Delaware County, and so on. So I do understand, you know, a lot of this increase in the tax was part of that. The trash increased last year. However, let me, let me share these numbers with you. And these, I'm not going to give you the actual dollar and the values, but I'm going to tell you the percentages increase, at least for the out property. And from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, our taxes went up forty-four point seven percent. One more number I'd like to share with you from the year twenty twenty. Now, just like, you just the Bethel taxes, okay? Never mind the Garnet Valley district, never mind Delaware County taxes and so on. So just for Bethel, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, are you ready for this one? Our taxes went up one hundred percent, about one hundred point something or other. So that's doubling. Like, I, I would, whatever, whatever we proceed from here on regarding this Schaefer project, which I'm not totally, totally against, but, but I am in a way. I want to explain that, my, my thing in that a little bit. But I like to understand how many of us have had a doubling in five years, or actually, it's just been a doubling of our income? I certainly haven't, okay? No. So please, as we move forward, please keep in mind what we are dealing with. Not only with Bethel taxes, but the Delaware County, the school district, put it all together. And yes, I understand there was the new reassessment, and there was the, the tax increase for the garbage thing. But the bottom line is still the taxes went up a hundred percent, if you're going to see, okay? Now, regarding the Schaefer project, again, I have to be honest, I don't know too, too much about it, but I know enough about it to really encourage, strongly encourage the board to stop spending more money on it. Okay, why? Why am I saying that? So. Thank you, though, but thank you, Sean. So, you know, from an, from an environmental type of perspective, I think it's a good idea that that space stays as an open space so it doesn't get developed. I understand that. I'm all for that part, okay? But I don't think we need to spend blah, blah, blah amount of money over a million plus dollars, whatever the heck it was, for this bench. And the porta potties, okay, the porta potties. So how many of you live next to that property? Gee, if I were, if I were next to that property, I sure would want one of those porta potties in the back of my yard, okay? You know, that's, no, I don't know that I would want that. But besides, besides that, now, if I, if I were one of those property owners next to this, to this land, some of you might think that that would increase your, the value, if you were to sell your house in some point or so. But quite frankly, from my perspective, I actually think that it's a detraction. Now, if there were just an open space, you know, you hear the birds and blah, 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 that's nuts, right? But all that other stuff, the people coming around, people that you don't know, coming around, walking through, your security of your own property, again, just porta potties. So if I were, if I were a buyer, and I would see, if I were a buyer, one of your properties next to that area, I don't know that I would want to buy it, quite frankly. So I think you need to get that in mind also. Is it really an increase in the value of your property? I'm also sure that it is, okay? Besides that, think about all the money for the estate. We've already gone through a lot. Okay, I told you from, from year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, a hundred percent increase. I'm sorry, that's not acceptable. Okay? That's really just about all that I wanted to say. But just keep in mind, okay?
I'm back. James McDana, fourteen fifteens everywhere east. I got some questions now. I said earlier, my wife and I were married eighteen years old. I worked in a steel mill for ten years till I closed. Does anybody know on the Schaefer Reserve where the gate is? Does anybody know what was up by the driveway? Does anybody know? There was a brick house. Yeah, brick house with a white garage. Working in a steel mill, I was either on strike or laid off. Dr. Schaefer provided me with work. I painted that garage twice over the years, and the house twice. And I put all that fence. He's a good man, and that's not being debated. So I want you to tell me, what was that property when Schaefer owned it? When did it become a reserve? I think you bought a reserve when it was already a reserve. So tell me, what, when, what year was it a reserve?
He put it on our conservation, way before we bought.
Yeah, way before, way before. You're right. See, a lot of times when I ask questions, being a union guy, I always like to know the answer first. You're right. So why did we buy something that couldn't be developed?
We're not trying to develop it for a bless you.
No, could a developer put houses in there?
On portion of it, yes, there's portions of it that are not under the use.
How, how big a portion?
It's too small that I could put a house on under third, under current zoning, take it not.
Yeah, so.
The area is.
So.
The only thing outside of this, either up by his house or the.
Right. So actually, you bought a piece of property and you're misleading people that it couldn't be developed anyway. So actually, I named it months ago Sour Lemon Tree Park. Remember that night? You bought a lemon. You bought something that couldn't be developed, and now you're trying to sell it to people that, oh, we bought it so it wasn't developed, like across the street with a million-dollar houses. Million and a half dollar houses. Well, I'll tell you what, even if you put sixteen million dollar and a half houses on the Schaefer property, we'd be making money tax-wise instead of spending it. But you sold us a lemon. It was never being able to be developed anyway, right? That's a yes or no.
I mean, there's portions of it that can be.
Yeah, very small. How many houses?
I don't know.
Well, you should have known that before you bought it. Yeah, but you, yeah, but you should have known that before you bought it. No, it is. It's important because you sold us a lemon. You sold us a lemon, and now we're all paying for it. We're paying for it in our Bethel Township taxes. The million-dollar people across the street. A lot of times, these people just pass through the township. These people like fine members. A lot of them been here forever. I've been here forty-eight years just on Zebby Road. You sold us a lemon. That's why I named it Sour Lemon Tree Park. I'm done.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Dave Tustin, one one five nine, Namets Creek Road. Dave Tustin, one one five, Namets Creek Road. I'll keep close so you can hear me. Listen, I wasn't going to.
Just talk loud.
Oh. All right. I wasn't going to talk about budget stuff now. I thought we had to wait till the end. Is it okay if I do it? It's not going to be long. It's only, I, so I really appreciate you guys giving me the spreadsheet and getting back to me the email today. I really appreciate it. What I wanted to do is I reviewed the budget in detail, and I wanted to make sure you guys were fully aware of what's going on. It sounds bad that we're in a deficit, but if you look at the trending, it's kind of interesting. I looked over a ten-year window, but I thought, let's go back ten years, see where, what we've done, where we are. So interestingly enough, our income from taxes has gone down about sixty thousand dollars over the past three year, three cycles, which is interesting. So I'm not sure why that's the case. And our deficit, I had some charts, but I can't really put them up, so I apologize for that. I was too late sending them. But I can send it to you guys, and I can post it so everybody can look at it if you care. But it shows that for the past, I'll say, five years, we went into a little deficit, little deficit, little deficit. But the interesting thing is our surplus has increased also. So it sounds terrible. It's a bad message, right, that we're in a deficit? But we have a big cushion. Now, do we want the cushion to go down to like six hundred thousand like they talked about? I think that's a bad idea. I think our cushion should be at least a year's worth of money because if we run into some type of situation where we need to like put a new roof on and we can't afford it, we need to be able to pay for it. We don't want to take out a loan, right? So we need like at least that. I had a lot more thoughts, and I don't really want to go through them all. So that was like this spreadsheet. One other thing I wanted to mention is we need to consider some other tax or income sources. We got a few businesses in this area. I don't think we're paying like a business licensing fee or anything like that. And I think we're at least a hundred businesses, maybe more, right? So we should consider that. I went through one line and looked at a bunch of other townships in the area to see what's their budget look like. They're actually budget balanced, which is, you've got to fix that. And the interesting thing is, now, I know we don't want to earn income tax. I never wanted that when I was working because that stinks, you know, you have to pay it. But the interesting thing is some townships, King of Prussia, where I used to work, they charge you forty-two dollars a year for a privilege to work in the township. Well, I bet you we have over a thousand people working here through the various businesses. Forty-two thousand a year, that's forty-two K you can add back into the budget, right? Now, I want to talk, so that's the two, two things I wanted to bring to you. And then I had a, I had a review of some big percentage increases. So we love the police department, but it went up forty-four percent over the last two years. And I think we have nine cars now. We paid eighty thousand dollars for a brand-new one. My son-in-law works down in Norwood. He says they really have trouble with their equipment, you know? So we don't want that. But I don't think we need nine cars because we got two guys working at a shift and maybe three. Do we really need that? And I know we need at least another run of spare to put it in the shop if one of them's bad. Plus, I'm not sure who polices the state roads. I don't think it's us, right? We're not allowed to do that. Polices the state roads. I don't think it's us, right? We're not allowed to do that. So do we get income from the state police when they, they stop people? And, and, and I, and I actually, I didn't realize this. I guess I'm on a state road. So I need to call the state police and say, could you please come down here and do a speed trap? I almost got knocked, uh. You know, up the hill when a, a guy with a truck went down sixty miles an hour and the, the gust almost blew me over. Um. We need to deal with that forty four percent in two years. It's another twenty four percent this year. I don't think we, so. Last year we were at a deficit, this year a bigger deficit. The interesting thing is, I don't know why, there's something going on, but our, our savings increased between last year and this year. So. Can't explain that. I don't have all the insight. And by the way, I really apologize. I didn't, I didn't get involved in this sooner because I didn't know about it. And it was all of a sudden, it's like I heard about it and I'm thinking, oh, man, I need to start reviewing. But I guess I have to start going to Delaware County meetings and start complaining there. Like, what is going on, guys? Why are you spending this money? Our, um, building fund, it looks like it went up now. It went up sixty three percent. It's probably a smaller number, but from a percentage wise, that's a lot. Uh, Public Works, that's the park. It went up, um. Total between two years, a hundred and thirty three percent over what it was in the past. Now, you think the park, I love the idea of a park. Um, I don't think we need to do it all in the same year. And I know we talked about it, gee, that we. We're, because we got grants, those grants offset a lot of the cost, but. With those grants come like hamstrings. They say ADA compliant, you got to do this. But in order to get the money, I guess it's, but you should, we should understand what the implications are. But anyway. Um, so that's the number on the grants. Um, and then there's township. We, we are hiring some new people this year. Uh, that's going to bring us another like forty percent over last year and it's, you know. We might want to hold off on the hiring until we get our budget house in order, right? And then last thing I wanted to mention, oh, that's it. That's all I want to talk about. Thank you. And, um, I do, I did go through the detailed budget and I am ready to talk to somebody because I have about eighty questions. And I didn't want to bring them all here tonight.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, Diane Smith, sixteen oh two Wendy Way. I've come to a lot of these meetings, so, uh. You know, uh, I've been, uh. You know, paying attention to what, what's been shown or trying to. So a couple of things, I thought that the news, a township newsletter might not be a bad idea. We could do a mailing, maybe. Maybe three times a year, you know, with a some like, you know, so people who maybe don't have access to the web or just don't like it. Or don't do Facebook or whatever, they can, you know, at least they can read what's going on, good, bad, and you know, the ugly, I guess, you know, maybe, I don't know, three or four times a year, they, you know, and you probably get a discount on the postage. Which by the way, I got one of those letters and mine was postmarked. So no laws were broken there. Um. As for the budget, it kind of said in that message that you sent out on, on, on your, your webpage, um. That we're not allowed to talk about Schaefer. And I get that. We have a Schaefer meeting Thursday. Please come back. Thursday night, same place, same time. Please come back and we can talk about Schaefer. Um. But I will take, talk about a little bit, but you also said that we're not, you know, we're not allowed to really talk about the budget. You insinuated that. When can we ask questions if we can't? Really not supposed to talk about the budget meeting, you know? That seems unfair, especially since you didn't even give us. The budget until after the preliminary meeting last week. I mean, we got it the next day. You know, you see, we couldn't ask intelligent questions because we couldn't see anything. We were dependent on Chuck Denny's. Uh, you, you report, you know, the slideshow. And I don't think that's fair. Maybe you should have a second meeting about the preliminary budget. In all fairness, if people can come back and ask questions, if you don't, let's do it in the evening. Um. Let's see. Uh, I'm just curious, how much did you cut in the budget? Have you cut anything from the preliminary meeting or did you cut anything from the initial submission that of the department heads gave you? Any?
Yeah, I, I, I like to answer. I don't know if somebody stepped in. But I'll, I'll go until someone interrupts me. I, I guess the, the first thing is. Your previous question of how, how can you ask questions? You can stop by or email the township. Um, and there, there's an opportunity to give a response. Some residents have communicated and, and been getting responses in that way. Second question I think was, has the. Has the budget been reduced since the kind of all in number from all of the different, uh, groups? And the answer is yes. Uh, I think it was. About ten percent or so reduction from the, from the original number. I mean, we have to keep in mind. The adopted budget from twenty twenty five was. Over a million dollar deficit. And it, it, it's hard to go backwards from the year prior. When a lot of that is tied into. Uh, I would, I, I, I don't want to say fixed costs, but payroll or insurance or things where we have a pretty reliable. Uh, understanding of what that cost is going to be. And, and I guess to go just, just one step. Further, I wanted, uh, Mr. Tustin's comments was not, not necessarily seeing how we could have a. A deficit on paper and then end up with a surplus in real life. I think that's just, there's a. There's, there's too much we're budgeting as our revenue and our expenses. And in the reality, sometimes we have. Uh, you know, uh, greater revenue or lesser expenses that, or we. Actualize more interest from our high yield interest savings than what we thought. But, um. I, that was kind of random. I don't know, uh, Ms. Smith, if that's everything, but, um, please continue.
Oh, okay. So, you know, I get it. It's a moving target, you know, sometimes you don't get as much money. Sometimes you get more. I know that. I understand that. Um. But I was curious as to how much budget, you know, how much you have, like, you know, we were begging you to please. Cut back the budget because it's just too much. It's just huge. And you're right, you can't roll back. We're going, you know, we have two thousand and twenty four. And then two thousand twenty five and now two thousand twenty six. It's a huge, huge increase to the budget. We're never going to roll that back. It's never going to go lower. I am. Scared to death to see what two twenty, you know, twenty twenty seven is going to look like. And you know, the taxes will go up then because there won't be as much money in our savings account. Um. So I said that, and I just, uh. So I said that, okay, the other thing is about the preserve, which I think maybe you don't have a. I don't know why we're calling it a preserve. I thought it was a great idea, but when I, I've seen what, you know, has been presented and I'm looking forward to what's presented on Thursday. The whole thing is being completely, I mean, you're, 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 you're taking off like two feet of ground and, and getting rid of all the beautiful milkweed. I'm begging you again, every month, I beg you, can we please make this a simpler, open space? No, no, no paved sidewalks, just mow the grass. And, you know, have some paths that are mowed shorter and let's keep it as simple as we can. Have a nice parking lot. You know, I know we have to have that and we haven't had that. And that's kind of a shame. We've owned this land for what, three years? And nobody can go in there. Nobody can drive in there because the gates always close because, you know, we've sort of, you know, dug your heels in. That we can't, you know, we can't go in there, you know, until it's perfect. Well. You know what? A lot of people could have just, could have enjoyed it, you know, the butterflies and the birds and everything. They could have. Um. And we'll, I'll talk more, you know, I'll talk more about this on Thursday. And I guess that's about my only questions for right now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Thursley. I live in sixteen forty one Doge Avenue. I'm a thirty, two year resident of Bethel Township. Uh, a couple decades ago, I was an elected auditor in Bethel Township for one six year term. So I have a history and I'm somewhat familiar with the numbers. Uh, I want to give you, make it as brief as possible, as high level as possible. I printed the budget. On the website. It's very luminous, very comprehensive. I have nice graphs and charts and everything, but it's not really usable. It's not relevant because it gives you just. One little point in time, one vertical column. Twenty twenty six, one vertical column. When you're supposed to draw conclusions, right? It's hard to do. You, you don't see any prior information. You have this or you're not able to project from this. And I'll do that for you. If I take this budget. So luminous. I printed that in. And I'd like all of you to do this. I went to the office. And I requested, which I have over twenty years. Here is a six year budget. It's, uh, what I call a horizontal budget. It gives three years of prior year information. In an eight column format. It has mid-year twenty twenty five. Then they update to twenty, uh, for the rest of twenty five through December twenty five. And that serves as a foundation and the springboard for the budget of twenty twenty six. That you have in here, not like twenty. Uh, go to the office and get this expanded budget. I'll read five numbers to it. It'll frame everything. At the beginning of this year, if we get out January one of twenty twenty five. The general fund surplus was three million eight hundred and fifty two thousand. So that surplus is a government accounting terminology. Public accounting that would be retained on. That would pay earnings have accumulated over fifteen years. Through prudent management. Fiscal restraint. And then it slowly accumulated. To that point. So we start out number one, three million. Eight hundred and fifty two thousand. Get this form. Go to the last page. In the middle, projected, uh, twenty twenty five, which will take us to December of twenty twenty five. Operating loss for one year, six hundred thousand dollars. How can we lose? Six hundred thousand dollars. In one year, this year. Okay? That brings that surplus of three point two million down to. Three point two million. Then go to. The number in the. Lower left hand corner, the operating loss for next year. One point two million. How can this township lose? Loss, operating loss, one point two million. That brings the surplus, retained earnings down to two million. So that gets us to twenty twenty six. And you want financial information to be predictive. So we end twenty twenty six. With just two million, like from three point eight to two million. A loss of forty seven percent, I think. With a one point two million loss in twenty twenty six. What are they going to do for twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight? You're going to have more than a million dollar loss in twenty twenty seven. You're going to have more than a million dollar loss in twenty twenty eight. So during twenty twenty eight. We will have no retained earnings. No surplus. They would have burnt through. Three point eight million dollars. And then you're going to see your package. You're, you're worried about nickels and dimes, forget it. How are they going to fund? So I think before, uh, the meeting, I would request that the board, where the budget. Present. In addition to the twenty twenty six budget. A twenty twenty seven budget and a twenty twenty eight budget. Make them accountable. They don't think, they don't want you to hear. So. Before they go on a budget, we should demand. That we see a twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. I mentioned this last year. Our revenue over the years are linear, flat. Spending was going up, 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 breaking through the breaking point. With growth rates in all of the parks. But it's really manifesting in twenty twenty five. Uh, quote with the numbers you quoted, yes, in twenty twenty five. And more so in twenty twenty seven. So bear in mind. The retained earnings, three point eight million. To two million, six hundred thousand loss, one point one million loss. Which will perpetuate into the future years, which will wipe out our retained earnings. Uh, and the comment you made, uh, was correct. There's a slide in here keeping twenty five percent in reserve. Well, in your family budget. You had an emergency, you know, medical issue, you got laid off. If you had, if you could do it, you would like to have six months in reserve. You would like to have a year in your rainy day fund. Right? You would six months a year. This thing says, oh, we'll have two months. Fifteen point sixty seven percent. Right? They are so far off this. But I implore you. Go to the office. S forty eighth column, expanded budget. It's very succinct. Here I got, I don't know, like. Bringing all of this. You'll see, uh, this is for the general fund. You have it all here at your fingertips. Then you can come into the. The next meeting on the budget. And it'll be right at your fingertips. We'll all be quoting the same numbers. We'll all be seeing the same thing. We all be contradicting each other. And my conclusion is. By twenty twenty seven and into twenty twenty eight, our retained earnings that started this year, January first. Three point eight million is wiped out. And what the hell are they going to do? So don't worry about the little tax increases you're seeing now. You know, be ready, start saving. Thank you.
Uh, Jerry McMullin, sixteen oh seven Nicole Drive. I've been in Bethel Township since nineteen ninety two. In a house that Giovanna's father built. Um, and to the young lady's point. I've never been to one of these meetings. Uh, what got me here? Could it be the red letter I got in the mailbox? Yes. And you know what? It's the most interesting thing I've received in my mailbox in a long time. Usually I go to the mailbox and I take everything out and I walk right to the recycle bin. The US mail right now is one of the most useless functions of the federal government that we have. And I'm a libertarian. I think we, we need to get rid of, uh, some of the mail service we need, but we don't need all that junk mail. The red letter, I don't know if it was mailed to me or somebody stuck it in there. I don't care. All right. It gave me a piece of valuable information. I did not know we were in this situation. Now I know. And I should have been coming to the meetings. And so now I will be coming to the meetings. Uh, in the future. Um, I think based on where I live. If Schaefer Reserve is where I think it is, I'm in walking distance. But Atkinson Park is also walking distance from me. It's fully developed. I can go there. It's got a path. It's got a pavilion. I don't use the pavilion. I don't know what I would use it for, but. You know, I can walk around it. And my wife is texting me. She's watching this live stream and she's giving me some tidbits. And she said, it's a preserve. Leave it wide open. Why do we need to develop it? Thanks. And I learned another bit of information. Apparently the doctor already had it as a preserve, basically, the majority of it. Um, so let's continue. Uh, he obviously wished it to be that way. Let's continue that way. I'm not sure if he wished it to be developed. Anyway. Listen, everybody else was more prepared than I am. They had all their documents, the gentleman before me. I got you by one year in Bethel. One year longer. Based on what I heard about the budget, it doesn't seem prudent to spend that kind of money on this. Leave it preserved. I go walking in the parks that just have dirt trails. I don't, I do that in many different places. I've been walking in Atkinson Park that has a little path around it. It doesn't need the path. You can walk on a trail. You don't need to develop. You don't need the pavilion. That's all. Rose Street Park, yes, and, uh. I, I'm. Somebody had issues with sidewalks. Yes. Uh, I grew up in Ridley Park, right on Chester Pike. Sidewalk. Every time it snowed, the snow plow would come and plow all the snow on the sidewalk with the salt. It was real pain in the butt to clean that sidewalk. I'm happy that I don't have a sidewalk where I live.
Please, go ahead.
I'm back. James McDaniel, fourteen fifteens, W Road East. I'm going to go in a different direction. There's a lady in the audience. Her father, don't. Stay up. Her father, her father paid him. All right, okay, yeah, I see you now. Their father is John Myers. When I seen John Myers when I was a kid, he had a hammer in his hand, a trowel, I think cigarette. And he, I think his main wardrobe was khaki pants, but he worked, he was a worker. I tell you, he had a lot to do with these buildings, right? And I think a lot of them was volunteer. And it's all about. Yes. I didn't see, I didn't know that. I I seen Susan back there tonight, and I think we went to school together, but I I don't know, that was a long time ago. But I seen her sitting back there, and I'm thinking, her father paid him, was all about saving money. Something that some of these people up front, like you, don't know anything about. Because the numbers prove it. But, but. I didn't know your father well enough to thank him, but I didn't realize how much money he saved me in retirement money. Because the money I saved was a 401K. The money that it's costing now, that money's gone. Tax money's gone forever. And I said before. You take three numbers. Take your Delaware County taxes. Bethel Township taxes, your school taxes, if you pay a a retirement community. Association fee, put that in there. If you're going to bring your house, add all them together, if you're going to be in your house for fifteen years, multiply that by fifteen. And that money's gone. You'll never see that money back. That's our 401K, that money's gone. That's all. And you don't have to be accounted to do that.
Uh, John Nevy thirty two thirteen Sam Farm Lane, uh, apologies for my voice a little bit today, I've been getting a little bit cold the last couple days. Um. I I, those who come to the meetings, no, I come fairly regularly, so I'm not, I'm not a, not new to this. Um, I I, there's. This has been, without question, the strangest meeting I've attended. As a, as a resident of this, of this township, I've been a resident for twenty two years, you've been back in two thousand and three. Uh, and I get everyone, I think most people here know, and certainly the board knows, I am one of the houses right behind the uh Schaefer Reserve. Uh, we moved in in part because we knew that that property could never be developed, that's exactly why we moved into the property. Um. And during most of the, with the exception of the last five or six years, since the township purchased the property or began, um. I've never had to go to these meetings, I went to one or two, I think occasionally. Since the township's decision to buy the property, which I was initially in favor of. The preserve will go and you, we don't have to worry about someone privately owning it and trying to do what they can to um revert it back to something that could be developed. I thought there was a positive, it was preserved, it would be permanently preserved. As you know, as what Dr. Schaefer had indicated into his covenant, which is to be an open, basically open space, which is exactly what it is today, in effect of. Since then, the, the, the members of this board have. Some members of this board have openly and pushed to have a very large development of the property. Uh, the initial plans were extensive. Far more extensive than the last, even the last version that we saw. Um, those plans had evolved as, as the reality of the covenant and the reality of the restrictions that were placed along through the property by Dr. Schaefer. Became evident to the township. Um, and then has moved forward. That being said, in the same time period as this has all gone on. I've watched the tone, tenor, quality of what's going on, the way we act. As neighbors, as friends, as people who have to live next to each other. Deteriorate in a disgusting way. Puminating with what I just saw today, which is people calling the police. Because someone put a flyer in their mailbox. Now, mine was mailed, I did get one. It was in, and I know it was mailed because it was literally in between a couple of bills that I got. So it was very clearly sent, given to me by the post office. I suspect that that is the case in most, if not all, of the situations. That being said. You know, what is going on that we are getting this vitriolic? This talking to each other in such vile manners. Taking such a nasty tone with each other. Over a preserve that the township currently owns. That is sitting there. Exactly the way it has. For twenty five, actually probably longer than that, because I'm sure it was sitting that way before Dr. Schaefer. You know, had it designated as preserved, so if you get the tax credit, and let's be very clear, Dr. Schaefer did it to get a very large and substantial tax savings. That probably has, I would no doubt, you know, to refer to. The, the tax collector, but I'm sure would certainly would have mass, mattered in that hundreds, if not hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in terms of savings over a twenty five year period. So very large tax savings that he received. And we're sitting here watching, you know, our, our board is sitting here trying to. In the, in spite of the fact we now are facing a very significant deficit. By any stretch of the imagination. At one point two million dollars this year, probably going higher next year. And, and, and all for what? Because we want to have some fancier park than we already have access to? We have plenty of parks. We literally sit on the border of one of the largest parks in Delaware County. One large enough to have a golf course, in addition to the campsites and the creek. And the old bridge would used to be there. Um, and everything else that goes back into, into, into um. Clayton Park, thank you. We're at each other's throats, we're mistreating each other, we're getting angry and nasty with each other. Over a nice, over improvements to something to be nice to have. But it's going to cost an absolute fortune that we don't have right now. And not only that we not have right now. But in which there are very legitimate. Legal questions as to whether or not we can even do anything with it, because guess what? There are land use restrictions on the property, significant, I, I, I have read thoroughly the covenant, I have cop, not have, didn't bring them with me, I apologize, but. You know, as, as the board members, I think, are aware, because I've had these discussions and I've quoted from the covenants in prior meetings. Very significant restrictions on that property. This is not. What I moved to this township for, I moved to this township because it was quiet. We all got along. Regardless of a party affiliation, regardless of our thoughts, our concerns were to enhance the neighborhood, enhance. Our community and to support each other. Not to be at each other's throats because someone wants to build another gazebo that we don't need. Someone wants to put this behind properties of people who have no desire to have. The vagabonds, the outside influences that come in and use most of the parks within our own community, many of whom are coming in from out of state. And certainly coming in from outside of our community. Park back there. For those of us who don't want to have a porta potty. Ten feet from our property line. And by the way, that is, the last proposals that I saw had porta potties. Ten feet from my neighbor two doors down. I'm not exaggerating that either. This is not what we should be doing. We are facing a very legitimate budget issue situation. Some of it, was, was some of it without our control, absolutely, we have certainly spent, I think, assuming the numbers I saw in that letter are correct, and given that, that no one from the board. Has contradicted those numbers, I'm assuming that they are close enough to accurate, reflective of reality. We've spent a lot, six hundred and forty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars thus far, maybe it's rough, rough by ten percent fine. But it's a lot of money that's been spent thus far. We're out that. But, you know, there are expenses that we did not anticipate, we had the situation with the uh, the EMS last year. Which was legitimate and serious and was well outside of anyone's understanding or knowledge or control. It was unexpected. So we certainly had to incur some expenses, and some of that is certainly legitimate. But we should be, and we should be facing that as a township and saying, how do we want to deal with it? But our focus should be on that. Not on spending money. On vanity projects, not on spending money on gazebos that we already have and don't take care of already. Not on spending money on things, not on agreeing to grants that require us to pay twenty to forty percent. Matching funds to things that we don't need. We have legitimate expenses that need to be dealt with. Let's deal with those expenses, let's deal with them appropriately. And let's put off, at the very least, put off for discussion in two or three years' time, what do we, what can we afford to do with this property that we now own? Because it's been there for three years, people do use it from, you know, as they, as they have access to it and they want to. And there's nothing stopping people from being able to do that right now. But we don't need to develop it further, because even the developments that have been proposed. Are limited in scope because there are very serious restrictions on how it can be scoped and how it can be used. So that would be by request of the board. That you start to understand. That you're putting forward, that, that, that perhaps the well-being. Of the community, perhaps keeping us all together and trying to pull in the same direction and actually be a community is more important. Than a bloody gazebo, thank you very much.
Thank you, I, I can't tell, is there any, any other comment from the room?
Uh, yes. Several. I'll be real quick, Kathy Layton thirty seven oh seven, Pimlico Place. Um, to the gentleman who put together the spreadsheet. There you are, thank you, um. I'm asking the board, is there any reason why that spreadsheet can't be put onto the website instead of people bombarding the township to print it out? An individual basis, and can we move to have it on a regular basis? Always updated, um, rather than a single year budget. I'm new to Bethel Township, we've only been here three years, and we came here because we loved it. And I'm a little alarmed, listening to this budget that we really weren't aware of when we moved in. So I appreciate the input from all of you who've been here for years. Um, but I would like to see more data, and I think that spreadsheet that he presented would be something that the township and everyone in the township deserves to see. So will the board put that on the website?
I think it's public information, should be able to have access to it.
Right, rather than going to the township and bothering.
I'm only one person, so, I'm not, obviously not.
I don't want to spend all that money printing all that paper when you can have it on the website. So I would appreciate if you would put it in the minutes that you will put it on the website. Mr. Danny?
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear as well from folks that aren't the mic, could you repeat that?
I'm asking if you will, that spreadsheet that was presented earlier on the township went to website on a regular basis, from your.
Yeah, yeah, it's correct, yeah, so. Uh, Dr. Addison, and I guess Mr. Bars, is there, is there any issues with that? Being, being pushed out as far as it's not sensitive information, correct?
It was public, he had it printed, so.
Yeah. Um, so I, 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 I think, I, I don't have, I don't have an issue with having it posted if it's achievable.
I think it'd be very helpful for the citizens to see that. That was it, I wanted to be.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I guess I would respond, I just wanted to say too, for context, I think that the format. That uh is currently on the website is the same one that's been on the website for the. I think for the past ten years or so, so I think the public feedback is pretty clear that additional information um is favorable.
Great. Uh, Ed Deicher eleven oh eight Old Post Circle. I had a statement to prepare, or prepared tonight to read, but this meeting's been awesome, I mean, you guys have all been great. Um, and I agree with what you're saying, I, I, I went door to door with my running mate. For ten weeks, we knocked on twenty three hundred doors. And we got a lot of great feedback from people on both sides of the aisle, we knocked on Republican doors, Democrat doors, independent doors. Our answer rate was around fifty percent, so we spoke to a lot of people. Um. And I think everybody's pretty much on the same page, they want to live, everybody loves Bethel Township. They moved here, a lot of people, you know, I guess I'll say it, I've been here for thirty two years. You know, Joe and I were neighbors uh for a very long period of time, we're still good friends. Joe knows his numbers, Joe and I coached baseball at B Y C, and Joe could tell me numbers on every kid who was ninety years old, in any way. But I guess my point is, I think this is a good. Teaching and learning moment. Um, I'm doing some work with an attorney right now, who, as it turns out, after the third time I met with her, she's a supervisor in Edgemont Township. Edgemont Township does three budget public meetings before they enact their budget. They ask their residents for feedback. We couldn't find our budget, we couldn't see our budget, we couldn't know about our budget until last week. It's going to get adopted three weeks from now. Nobody wants to be coming to these meetings, giving people a hard time, but we want to know what's going on. You know, um, my property taxes have gone up sixty percent in the last seven years. I know everybody has different numbers on that, that's school, county, township, from what I hear, the county's gone up again. Big time, twenty twenty six, we haven't heard about that either. I think transparency is important. And I think it'll make everybody feel better about what's going on, I think people should go to meetings. But for years, we didn't have to go to meetings, because every year the balance, the budget was balanced. We had police, we had fire, we had services, we had people who would answer the phone or reply to emails. And I know the world's changing. But that's why I think transparency is even more important. And I, I encourage the board to adopt a balanced budget. Um, we need that fund, if, if I understand Joe's numbers, because I was looking at him myself a little bit. I think, just like everybody else, you need to have a year savings in the bank. Because things are going to happen. The ambulance service was a great example, nobody knew that was coming, in my mind, I don't know what the definition of reserves are. But that's money that's been set aside. That the township has accumulated over the years through solid management, if you have a surplus, you've managed your money well, you paid all your bills. You know, these surpluses don't happen overnight, they take decades to happen, and if we're going to wipe them out in two and a half or three years. We're going to be in a lot of trouble. So, you know, hopefully the board will listen to what everybody's saying, I, you know, the word's out now. But I think the word could have gotten out a lot sooner, I think back in September, the people who were at the meeting said, when, when can we see a budget? You know, we're not here to cause a scene, we just want to understand what's going on. We want to understand what's going on in our township and how things are going to be paid, the police, you know, everybody who works for the township deserves a good wage. Deserves to be able to go home to their families every night. And hopefully, we'll approve a good budget in a few weeks that everybody will be happy with. And then we can all start getting along with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deicher, and, and Ms. Vance, before, before you head in, um, just a couple of points, one is. With the packet that's gets submitted uh online for review by the public every month, there is a financial statement that's available for review. So that, that, that is something that we started rolling out this year, and then I guess the second item was. You know, the fact that the, the budget had been balanced in years past, that's, that's not accurate, I, you know, I think that was part of the demonstration. In the budget meeting is that the ba, the budget has been in a deficit for, uh, since at least twenty twenty, but even going back to twenty seventeen. So it's, it's, it's a product of increased costs uh and flat income, flat tax revenue. I'm sorry, Ms. Vance, please.
Hi, my name is Donna Vance, I live at sixteen twelve Rendy Way. Um, there's a couple of things, I've been coming to these meetings forever and a day, as you well know. And there's two things that, that were not ever discussed, like to people who didn't know. One of those is that the covenant did not allow the change, so. They were paid thirty five thousand dollars, please tell them if I'm incorrect, to amend that covenant so they could build on it. Thirty five thousand dollars of your tax money went to amend, and I made the, the statement here at a meeting. That to me, that's a bribe, not an amendment, you leave the covenant alone, thirty five thousand dollars, now you can build on it, is that correct? Did I, did I get that wrong, or is it correct?
The number I believe is correct, ten thousand is for their continued uh.
The number I believe is correct. Ten thousand is for their continued uh, observation because they monitor the, the site every year. And provide a report to the township. Twenty thousand is for them to review the updated plans.
So.
And amend if needed.
You, you can, you can make your own judgments to which you call it. And the other thing was that what is always like the elephant in the room is. Um, if anybody knows Goodly Road, they know that Goodly Rose, it road is a. A haven for tires rolling down in the middle of a, a rainstorm. I have pictures of. That they are now building a. Path from Goodly Road over to a bridge that goes over. The creek and up to the preserve for it. Last time I heard was two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Giovanna, I don't know if that's right. Am I close?
Well, probably a little less than that, but not, not that much less.
Or a bridge to get from Goodly Road that floods. Yes, they are doing a culvert there and, but it will raise it. It will make it a little bit better. But I have video of. Garbage that comes down there during a, a hard rainstorm. And I'm not talking about. A hurricane. I'm talking about, you know, when it rains really hard for a few, a few minutes up to an hour, this is when it happens. So, well, how long? Oh, the bridge is going to be made out of steel. What about the boardwalk that's going up there? But that's not going to be able to sustain that. It's not. So they never even mentioned this is below the park. Or the preserve is designed. So, and a long time ago, the supervisors put out a. Um, a survey and asked people to. Ask what they thought about it. And they got answers, but it went in their favor because the word just, just didn't get out. Um, the word is out now and people can see what's really happening. And my hat's off and I'd like to kiss the ring of the angel who sent those damn letters. Because it brought out a lot of people that didn't know what was going on. And now you do. So, drop the park.
Ed Deicher, eleven oh eight Old Post Circle. For full disclosure, Joe Platt and Ed Deicher did not send out that letter. And what I got was mail and stamps.
They, they may be going to federal prisons, so you may have to bail them out.
Trish Sights, sixteen seventy, Wisteria Way. I moved here eighteen years ago and I thought I would be very civically responsible and I started coming to all the meetings. And whoever was here, they sixteen, seventeen years ago, you know, was just going on then and what was happening. It was once again, something that was trying to be pushed onto us. That people did not want. And what happened was. We got out and we pounded the pavement. We have provisions on. We would not let it die. And guess what? It didn't happen. So if that is what the community want, if, if we're coming together saying we don't want this. Then I, number one, will get out there and pound the pavement again. And do what's necessary to show the board that we don't want this. And like I said, anybody that was here then knows exactly what I'm talking about. The other thing is, I don't understand why, when all these questions are coming up about the budget, there's no answers coming forth. I remember years ago at these meetings. The board had to respond. Is there a reason why no budget? Will this budget talk is not being responded to?
Well, there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, number one is it, it's, it's not on our agenda for the meeting tonight. Um, and it's really public comment.
Why isn't it on the agenda if it's going to be passed in three weeks and there's no knowledge out there? Of what is actually going on?
Well, it's, it's not on this agenda. It is on the agenda for the ninth. And there have been uh, meetings to discuss the timeline of the budget discussions. And, and, and in general, it's, it's a public comment, not necessarily a, a public Q and A. Um, as Supervisor D'Agostino said, you know, it's, it, it's not that we, we can't necessarily answer every question. Um, and we may not have the information at our fingertips for. I, I thought you said, oh, I thought you said you didn't have to answer questions.
Oh, I said I didn't have to answer your question.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood. But no, I mean, it's, it's, it's really public comment and we try our best to answer questions. Uh, sometimes folks are at the podium and they ask several questions and you don't necessarily want to interrupt. Um, but that, that's really the, the few answers that I have.
Okay, and honestly, I'll be perfectly honest, I became complacent. Because our township was run so efficient. For how many years? And now can't become complacent. So we'll do what we have to do. That's all I think.
Is there any other comment uh, from the room on this?
Can I comment on the agenda item that we're going to vote on?
Uh, the, yeah, we're talking about new business item A?
Yes.
Yes.
So thi, this is from uh, Environmental Management Consulting, E M C, uh, directed for the Ivana. Project understanding. It's only seven fifty bucks, so you think it's nothing. Project understanding. It is our understanding that Bethel Township wishes to submit a design and application for a pedestrian bridge. And pathway which cross some of the previously delineated wetlands of the property. Is this the Goodley Road boardwalk? So I didn't know we voted on approving the Schaefer plan already, but. If you, if you vote to approve this seven fifty, they're moving forward with the boardwalk, I guess. We're gonna, you know, review that on Thursday and then vote on it, but obviously everybody's moving forward with it.
My understanding is that if we approve this seven fifty today, it allows for that delineation. It doesn't necessarily say that you're going to do the bridge, but the delineation needs to occur.
Why don't you wait until after something's approved?
For any work that has to be done in the wetlands or the waterway, the delineation is required and the letter is involved.
Sorry, John Nevee, thirty-two thirteen Seren Farm. I, I, I'm sorry, Chuck, I have to ask, you know, to the board. Um, because some comments that were just said are disturbing. Um. My understanding of the meeting this Thursday is to, is an initial review by the public of the, of the most recent plans that are coming together. It sounds to me like the, no, it's actually not. It's a, it's a public review ahead of, immediately ahead of decision by the board to go ahead and vote for these plans? Can you clarify what the intent of the Thursday meeting is? Because I was at the. I was late at the last meeting in October, but I was there. My understanding was it was a. Public review and comment period, public review and comment meeting to review the plans, which to my understanding are still not available. This is the most recent stuff that I've seen.
They will be available uh, probably tomorrow morning on the website.
Okay, so we've not had actually an opportunity to review this, but are, are you voting on the plans? Are you, i- is the intention of the board to vote on the plans this Thursday? Or is this simply, what was that originally advertised, which is a public, uh, public review and comment meeting?
My, my understanding, Mr. Nevee, is that this is a, a, a presentation from the engineering. Company on where the. Permit level documents are for uh, public consumption and feedback and input. And my understanding is that there, if we were to move forward with it. It would be a subsequent motion in a, in a later meeting. Giovanna, is that accurate?
My understanding, we don't need to vote uh, on it because we've already voted to hire the consultant to do the work.
To my understanding, and I, you'll have to forgive me because, but I, I, I've been at most of these meetings. I am unaware that any plans were ever formally approved by the board. Other than to, for further review and further comments. The last, the last. Sorry, the last formal plans that I saw had significant comments, and I gave quite a few, a lot of comments, some positive, some negative. Um, to the last version of the plans, but they were a version of plans that were still in development and under review. I am unaware that any decision was made by the board to move forward with anything beyond. Further review and further, you know, investigation. Now all of a sudden, after what's been at least six months, probably longer, I apologize, but I don't remember the last time we had, we discussed this, but it was, I think. When to say, you know. Spring at the earliest is my recollection. Now I'm hearing that we actually know these plans may be close to final and you may be close to actually approving it? I, I, I'm, again, I go back to my earlier comments. There is. There's a, the lack of transparency that has been related to this entire project. And is now related to what we're seeing now with the budgetary questions that are now arising out of it, as a consequence of it. Is deeply, deeply saddening and disturbing. And I would please ask the members of the board, regardless of your party affiliation, regardless. Regardless of party affiliation. You're here representing everyone in this room, everyone in this township. Ask yourself if it's worth destroying the community the way you are right now. For the sake of another park for us that no one else seems to actually want. Thank you.
Erica Brynjak, uh, one four four zero Namens Creek Road. Um, it is my understanding that. The uh, first of all, I think that the board has been transparent. Uh, I have been to all the Schaefer Park meetings. I have, uh, prior to the new board, yeah, about two or three years ago, um, they consistently are having talks like in these meetings. Um, I think people who don't usually go to meetings don't realize that public comment, if you go to the school board meeting, they are not even. Allowed to answer you. It is not a question and answer. It is public comment. Um, I would like to say that uh, the gentleman who was just up here uh, does not speak for me. And I don't think he speaks for a lot of the people who answered. The survey, um, that people uh, throughout the whole township got to answer the survey and that they. The majority of township residents did want Schaefer Preserve to become a usable preserve. I understand if you back to that property, it is an emotional and difficult time. I thought. The board went out of their way. Um, at some meetings I heard they said, oh, you want a privacy fence? We'll build a privacy fence. You want a, some trees? We'll build trees. I mean, they are going above and beyond what is required by law. Also, just throw some trails out there. Um, I don't know if you're, consider yourself an ableist or not. But there are some people that actually uh, use walkers and wheelchairs, children in our, in our um. Neighborhood. I represent the Garnet Valley. Um. Neurodiversity support group. I'm the president. I have been the president for over a decade. We have over a hundred families. Children who use wheelchairs. So I think it's kind of short sighted for you to say that the whole community does not want this. I think the youngest person here was the smartest. And she said that you were rage baited into coming here. So now you're involved after you get a red letter in the mail. And I think, excuse me, excuse me, it's my, it's my time. I, excuse me. I, I did not. Interrupt anybody and I did not interrupt you either, sir. How did I? Oh, okay. Well, she probably is. So anyway, I think, so I think that um, I, I just think that you need to. I understand that that's the, the feelings that you have, but you do not speak for this entire community. And the entire community um, showed in the uh, survey that was done a couple of years ago, that they would like this park. That Dr. Schaefer actually sold the, the, his property to the township because he wanted it to be enjoyed by all the residents here. So um, I also have been to many of the meetings and you talk about people being nasty. Um, I, I've heard uh, many people being nasty. Um, here tonight and in prior meetings, not always just about the preserve. So I don't think that this board or this decision has caused that. I have seen that in the past few years that I have been coming. Um, so I just want to be clear that although you all. The people in the room tonight may, may be the majority that feel this way, you are not the majority of the citizens of this township. And I would like to represent especially those who have disabilities and an ADA compliant path. Is, is something that is um, not only recommended, but insisted upon by the state. And the township so that other people and most people can enjoy it. It's also the most maintenance-free way to um, have a path. Um, it is the least expensive way to have a path that goes through the property. And I understand a lot of you have been here a long time. That has been beaten into this meeting. There's probably hundreds of years um, combined that you all have lived here. That does not make you any more um, important than other people who have may have just moved here a year ago. Or maybe ten years ago or twenty years ago. And unfortunately for you, you don't seem to like change, but change can be good. Change happens, prices ra, do raise, as you can see what's going on lately. And wanting, uh, as the one gentleman said, you know, if you want a sidewalk, move to Aston. Well, it can be, the opposite can be said the, the same way. You don't want to park in your backyard. You don't want a park that people can enjoy. You don't want high taxes, move to Delaware. I mean, it can go both ways, right? It can go both ways. So I just wanted to at least uh, represent those in my community that I have also been door knocking. And uh, fifty percent uh, answer rate is pretty phenomenal. Um, but uh, I will say that most of the people that I have been talking to, my neighbors. Um, the people in my support group, they are very excited to have a park. That they can go to, walk their dogs, have their children enjoy, just to look at nature, enjoy the uh. The park that the township has bought for all the citizens to enjoy. I'm sorry for those who border the park. I'm sorry, it's such a piece of contention for you, but you are in the majority. You may be the vocal majority. But you are in, I mean, you're in the minority. You may be the vocal minority, but you are in the minority. This township has thousands of people. That are very interested.
Ed Deicher, eleven oh eight Old Post Circle. For clarification, how many respondents did we get to the survey?
I'd have to go back. Yeah, I don't know.
When can I get that answer?
I mean, we can look it up. It's not hard.
I mean, we're being told the majority of the people in Bethel Township want this park, so I think if we can attach a number to it. We have an answer. Right?
Yeah, we can, that's, it's available.
When I was, when I was knocking on doors. And we only had a couple of weeks to do it after the supposed deficit. Came out, one point three two million dollars. We only had two weeks to talk about that when we were out knocking on doors. The people who said they wanted the park, we said, are you willing to pay one point three million dollars to get that park? They were all shocked. They might have answered the survey, but they didn't know what that survey was going to cost them.
Well, to be fair, i- if you're talking about the total cost that was presented for Schaefer Preserve. I, I think the presentation identifies, and I would corroborate that the majority of that would be. Grant funding. And, and I know that everybody has different opinions on the value of grant funding. Um, but I, I definitely identify that differently than Bethel Township general funds. So if I were to say to somebody that the township is going to spend one point three million to develop the preserve, I don't think that's accurate. Um, that might be the total cost of the program, but the contribution that Bethel Township taxpayers play in their general fund is significantly lower.
Well, and again, it's, I go back to two or three weeks ago when the deficit came out to the township. When Joe Platt and myself put out a social media post saying that Bethel Township. Is going to be staring at a one point two, one point three two million dollar deficit.
Mr. Deicher, there was a deficit the year prior. You could have pulled that data.
No, no, that's, that's not the point. The point was that I was told that that was untrue, and that we were fear, fear mongering was said to me by several people within the days after we sent that out. We were told we were fear mongering, and that wasn't the case. Well, we were only off by 10%. So again, transparency, I, I think part of the problem here is nobody knows, nobody understands right now what Schaefer Park is ultimately going to cost. We know we've spent 650 or 800,000 dollars on already. You can't get that money back. The township owns the property, that's great. I always thought it was a preserve. I didn't understand that it was a park that another X number of dollars was going to need to be spent on, and maybe some of its grants, some of it's not. So I think when that all can be summarized nice and neatly on a spreadsheet, I don't know if Joe's still here, um, here's what it's going to cost the residents to have that, then I think people will feel more comfortable with that decision. That's all.
Well, I, I would implore, I would implore folks to look at the budget presentation that was given, um, because the, to the best knowledge of the information we have now, that's our, that would be our plan to fund the program. That spreadsheet is there. The costs spent to date are there. It's been verified by the accounting department.
So how much have we spent to date on Schaefer?
$66,000.
No, no, to purchase the property?
750 odd thousand dollars was the total cost, but that, that was predominantly paid for with grants. That.
So it's cost of township, $66,000.
Since 2028.
$66,000 came out of general fund, which is funded by, uh, resident taxes.
So all township, so all Bethel Township has spent in perpetuity so far is $66,000.
Correct.
Correct. Now, again, some of my colleagues would say, in some way, you're also paying county taxes or state taxes or federal taxes that end up funding grants, but I'm a big proponent of grabbing as many grants as we can grab. That's money we don't have to spend. So with that caveat aside, that is the answer, $66,000. And then, okay.
So again, just being able to summarize at some point in time, based on a plan and based on grants that we're going to apply for, what is the cost to the residents of Bethel Township? Total? Completion?
Right, the proposed value, which is in the budget, is 130,000 dollars on top of the 66,000 dollars spent to date. But there is a, there is a gap that still needs to be, uh, covered. We're hopeful with additional grants can get us there, and some support at the county level, but that is the target that the board has set, uh, in this budget.
So if we move forward with spending money on a plan and half the grants don't come in, do we have projections for all those different things?
There are various avenues that we're trying to look at, and it's hard to really say what we're going to do, but I, I would say, the conversations that I've had, the, the goal is to have as minimal an impact as possible on the residents. So I can't really tell you what scenario A, B, and C is going to be until we find out the resolution to some of these things. There's a couple of different alternatives. Uh, Mr. Tustin, uh, you know, is there an opportunity to bridge it over multiple years? There's a lot of different ways to look at that. And I think there's an opportunity to dive deeper into this in Thursday's meeting, where, where it'll be on the agenda, but that's the best answer I can give you right now.
Okay. Um, I guess my last thought, and I know we're going on a long time. You buy things when you have the money to spend. Um, and there's so many other things in the township right now, you know, I heard about, I've heard about crumbling infrastructure that needs to be addressed, and I, that's a very comprehensive budget. I understand that, only, only probably a Joe Thurler can understand that, but at the same time, I think you don't buy things until you can afford to buy things and you know what the cost of those things are. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. I can't see, is there any other comment from the public? Okay.
I'm here again. 1415 Zebby Road East. You know, there's more people here that are against this than before I heard that. You know, where's, where's the other 50 people at? What is that? You know, you heard the fire guy say, they got six township members, six. You're going to have a paid fire department that in no time. Parker Township already has a paid fire. They got more paid firemen than do volunteers, that was in fact. I have a 48-year-old son busting up with MS. I know all about handicaps. You have the Axon, Axon Park, you have Clayton Park, you got the, uh, the, uh, Park on E-Bright Road, you got Ribby Park. I'm more worried about my house burned than. Back in the seventies, I seen pictures of my house when it was on fire. Second story, we had fire coming out of it. I didn't live there then. Sidewalks, I'll say it again, go to training. Go to training. I don't want to shovel sidewalks. I've been in my house 48 years, and I haven't had a mortgage payment in 30 years. I'm not moving. I hope I can wait you out tax-wise. You got a more expensive house than I got, I hope the taxes choke you, lady. I hope the taxes make it so you gotta move. I didn't say I was going to chirp her. I hope, I hope the taxes make it so you can't buy groceries, lady. There's still, still 80 taxpayers of Bethel Township that haven't paid your township taxes yet.
Mr. McDaniel, could, could you, could you focus your comments towards the board?
You, you're here every night. If there were coworkers, I'd be kind of upset that you're not here taking all this heat. Don't matter. If you can't do the job, bail out. Real simple.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly here, uh, I had a conference.
Also said, all the people in that area want the park. You said that last month. You're looking out for the people that live over there. Well, that gentleman lives there, a lot of people live there, they don't want. So you're not looking out for everybody. You gotta be more defined. And that wasn't a threat, lady. I'm just saying, I hope you can't buy groceries. There's other people in township that probably aren't.
Doc, let's, let's keep going through the agenda at this point, unless there's anybody who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to get public comment.
Okay, thank you. I believe there was a motion and a second for the authorization for environmental management consulting prepara, well, and delineation letter. All those in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Opposed.
Motion, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, item number two, it's, uh, similar. This is for, uh, permit fees for the highway occupancy permit and for the NIPD's permitting related to Schaefer Preserve. Um, again, this is, well, is there any other context, Giovanna, that would be needed for the public on this?
No, I mean, it's, it's the application fees to submit.
Application fees, thank you, that's what it is. And there's a, the permitting process takes time, um, so this is getting this underway. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the submission of permit fees not to exceed 1,650 dollars for the NPDES and highway occupancy permits for Schaefer Preserve.
I'll second that, my team.
Motion made and seconded by Supervisor Iacano. Is there any comments on this item?
Dave Tustin, 1159 Namens Creek Road. Um, I know you guys are doing a hard, a hard job up there because I relate to being on that side. Um, my only question is, uh, we're approving permits and occupancy, we just approved a, uh, I, I, $700, now it's a thousand dollars. And my concern is this, suppose we decide on Thursday, that's not what we want to do, we want to do something different, right? So now. Well, yeah, I get that. But suppose we decide, do we always, well, it'd be really nice to approve all this stuff after we approve the, the plan. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I, that's my point.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Hoopman, could you give any backstory on, on the, uh, kind of the timing of when we should go after this?
Preparing those plans, Chester Valley.
Okay, I'm just saying general guidance.
On the not permitting, but, uh, they're not looking to submit permit plans until after the meeting, um, that they will make. The checks will be cut, but they're not going to be submitted. The checks are already cut.
So you can hear me. Um, so you're saying the checks were already written and handed over?
No, they're all in the back, ready to be signed by the board. That's how we do it at every meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody. So the checks are ready to go, and once we approve it, then you'll hand them over? Or you're going to hand them over after we do the plan?
No, after the meeting on Thursday.
There you go, okay. I just wanted to check on that.
There's opportunity to make adjustments after that meeting or during that meeting. And, yeah, nothing, nothing will be submitted until after that.
Okay, I believe I have a motion and a second. Is there any other comment? All those in favor? Aye.
Opposed.
And one opposed. Motion carries. Item C.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year service agreement with Advanced Electrical Services Group, Inc., for generator maintenance at a cost not to exceed 695 dollars, subject to solicitor review.
And, uh, I will second, so a motion made by Supervisor Darren Essien, seconded by myself. Again, this is just our annual service agreement for a generator. Any comment from the board on this?
Uh, the only comment I have is I think we are, uh, we, I think it's been told that we're going to need a new generator in the near future, so I just suggest we put that, uh, out the bid maybe sooner rather than later, so we can, uh, stay on top of that cost that we have to incur with that.
Okay. Yeah, and the only comment I had, but this was really, might have been more for the township office and Dr. Addison was, if, if there was feedback from our annuals, I'd just be interested in seeing what it, what is the recommendation from Advanced Electrical in terms of the longevity of the generator, kind of, kind of along the same lines.
Yes.
Any comment from the public on this? I'm sorry, I might have already asked that. Okay, that said, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Oh, I guess that's, that's my turn. Um, all right, so, uh, this is a grant application to the Pico Green Region Open Space Grant for Schaefer Preserve. It is a $10,000 grant application. Uh, there is a $10,000 match commitment. This is a grant we've actually received, uh, back in 2018 as well for the project. Um, so we're hoping we would be successful again. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution 2025-36, authorization to apply for 2025 Pico Green Region Open Space Program Grant for Schaefer Preserve. Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by Supervisor Darren Essien. Any discussion from the board on this?
So it commits $20,000 of township funds, correct?
No, 10,000.
It says 10,000 application.
Yeah.
And then our 10,000.
We are requesting 10,000 from them, and we would provide 10,000.
Okay, so the total grant's 10,000.
Well, the total grant we will receive will be 10,000.
And then we match it with 10.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. But, and again, that could be paid for with Fienlu money, um, and in some cases it can be paid for with other.
Grant, yeah.
Other grant money, yes. I'm sorry, I thought somebody was talking. Uh, any other comments from the board? Or from the public on this? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a mo, a motion to approve payment of 6,750 dollars to Moore Brothers for completed curb preparing asphalt work at Seven Creek View. Uh, this work was already approved at our last meeting, and the work has been completed to the satisfaction of our township engineer, so just recommend leaving.
Motion made by Supervisor Iacano and seconded by Supervisor Darren Essien. Discussion on this item? From the public? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Onto announcements, as been, has been discussed a few times in this meeting, the Board of Supervisors will convene a special meeting on Thursday, November 20th at 6:30 PM in the Myers Building to receive a presentation from Chester Valley Engineers regarding the Schaefer Preserve. My understanding is that this, this presentation would include their plan set to date, uh, it would include their cost estimate, their, and their engineers' estimate of probable construction costs, um, and they'll be there to answer questions and take feedback.
Um, another announcement we have is on Monday, December 8th, 2025, the township will hold its fall yard waste collection.
Um, and this is, uh, the date on this is incorrect, but at, um, there will be a meeting on Thursday, December 11th. The board, uh, the board will receive a presentation on the proposed piles block development, formerly known as Independence Town.
Yeah, just, I guess a follow-up there. December 9th is our normal Board of Supervisors meeting, and originally we were hopeful to try to combine those activities, but, um, given the capacity of the Myers Building, it made sense to have separate meetings for both of those. Any other, uh, announcements?
Uh, you, you already mentioned this, but, um, Parks and Rec will be hosting Lunch with Santa on Saturday, December 6th. Um, it's from 11 AM to 2 PM at Bethel Springs Elementary.
Is there, uh, thank you. Is there any other, uh, public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I, one, one announcement. Just want to end the meeting on something positive, so many who might not be aware, but the BYC, uh, 9U Youth League, uh, won the championship this past weekend. Uh, it's the Independent Youth Football League, um, 9U, uh, there's 18 teams in league representing, uh, Chester County, uh, Southern, uh, Dover County, and Northern Wilmington, and, um, our boys won, they were undefeated, and they, they won a championship, so congratulations.
That's great. Thank you, Dec, uh, Supervisor D'Agostino, appreciate that.
December 11th is the presentation for the former Independence Town.
And, and forgive me, do, do we have a time yet on that?
I would think we do. 6:30 probably. Yeah, we'll post it. Um, just confirming with the applicant, uh, the date and time, pretty sure. They said the date was okay, but we'll just firm that all up and get the information posted.
If there's no further, uh, comment, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, you have one?
Uh, Dave Tustin, 1159 Namens Creek Road. So the Independence Town, uh, presentation, um, have they cleared up all the road concerns with that?
I mean, it's a presentation.
So he's just going to talk.
He's going to present an update.
I guess I better go to that to hear about it. Okay.
I don't know if you made a motion to adjourn or?
I did, I made a motion to adjourn. And a second, all those in favor? Aye.